So we're gonna go ahead and get started, if that's okay with all folks, staff. So I want to first open special Fairfax...
Do you have to do the pledge of allegiance?
No. Let me handle it, please, Ms... Okay. I'd like to open the special Fairfax Town Council meeting. The Fairfax Women's Club, 46 Park Road. This is Wednesday, May 1st, 2019, at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call us to order for the special meeting. Do you need to do a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Sure. Hi. Councilmember Lacks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goddard.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
And Mayor Coler.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like a motion for approval of the special meeting agenda and affidavit of posting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the one item on our special meeting is to adopt a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax in support of Team Marines, sorry, efforts to eliminate plastic straws in the town for the protection of our waterways. And with that, I'd like to invite Vice Mayor Goddard to step down from the dais and invite up the members of Team Marine.
Good evening, everyone. We have some very special guests here tonight, so I would like to invite Team Marine to join me up here at the microphone. Come on up, you guys. So this group of wonderful, brilliant, young folks have the opportunity through a competition with National Geographic called the GeoChallenge to head off to Washington to compete for $25,000 in a national competition. The project they chose was about the elimination of straws, plastic straws, in the Town of Fairfax. And we didn't even know they were scurrying around doing this amazing thing until I came upon them. And we would like to present them with a resolution that they can take with them, knowing that they have been endorsed and resolved by the Town of Fairfax. So I'm gonna read you guys this resolution, and then we will get you a copy to take with you. And here it goes. This resolution will be given a number before it comes to you, and it will be signed by our mayor. So "A Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax in Support of Team Marine's Efforts to Eliminate Plastic Straws in the Town for the Protection of Our Waterways." Whereas more than 1,100 teams from California entered National Geographic's GeoChallenge, a national competition designed to empower the younger generation to develop a creative solution to a real-world problem. And whereas during the challenge, the teams of students used important skills such as teamwork, research, innovation, critical thinking, and persuasive communication, and created models and campaigns, and communicated their ideas in creative video presentations. And whereas 21 students from San Domenico School in San Anselmo, California, were selected to compete among the top 15 teams in the California Regionals. And whereas they traveled together to California State University Fresno for the March 29th competition, where San Domenico's 7th grade, Team Marine, won first place. And whereas they will now be traveling to Washington, DC for the national competition at the National Geographic headquarters on May 19th through May 23rd, where the first-place team will receive a $25,000 prize to put toward their campaign, as well as support and guidance to implement their ideas. And whereas this year's topic was tackling plastic and dealt with the issue of plastic in our oceans. And whereas plastic straws are one of the six most common items found on beaches, are ingested by marine wildlife, and pollute our waterways. And whereas the Town of Fairfax is embarking on discussions around policy to eliminate plastic straws and reduce single-use plastic foodware products, now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax recognizes and extends its gratitude to Fairfax residents Alex Collier Lake, Mill Valley resident Gavin Kennedy, uh, where are you, San Anselmo resident Kayla Saxon, and San Rafael resident Hannah Zemke of Team Marine... Did I say that right? For their initiative and leadership to find a solution to prevent plastics from polluting our waterways. And be it further resolved that the Town of Fairfax supports Team Marine's efforts and will continue, I am sorry, and will consider their request to prohibit the use of plastic straws in Fairfax. And be it further resolved that the Town of Fairfax will look for partnership with Team Marine in working with businesses and educating the public about the environmental dangers of disposable plastics. And be it further resolved that the Town of Fairfax wishes Team Marine great success in the National GeoChallenge. The foregoing resolution was duly passed and adopted at a special meeting of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax held in said town on the 1st of May of 2019 by the following vote. Congratulations. Good luck, you guys. Thank you. You want to say two words?
What?
You want to say two words?
Uh, okay.
Just about your project, two words.
Uh, just like, like exactly two words?
Just not two words, but like, less than 25.
Okay. Um, well, we have an online petition, and you can sign that. And we have talked to businesses to see, um, it, like, we want support from businesses because they'll be, like, the most affected by the ban we want to happen. And we have some signatures from the owners of businesses in support of us as well.
Great. Maybe one more quick thing to say?
Nope. My two words are awesome, fantastic, and saving the environment. That's actually five.
All right, you guys, thank you so much, and good luck with the competition. Okay.
So this item is on consent, but if anybody would like to comment on this item, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. I want to say congratulations. You guys are our future, and we really appreciate all your hard work. So with that, would someone like to make a motion?
Well, I wondered to ask where the online petition is, so that people will know.
It's on change.org?
Change.org.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll find it. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion? Vice Mayor Goddard, you did an excellent job. Would you like to make the motion?
I would move that we adopt a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax in support of Team Marine's efforts to eliminate plastic straws in the town for the protection of our waterways.
Second.
So that was Vice Mayor Goddard, and second, Councilmember Lacks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, seeing none? Okay, congratulations, and we'll be rooting for you in Washington, DC. Thank you. So I'm moving on to open our regular meeting. And this is the regular Fairfax Town Council meeting. Fairfax Women's Club, 46 Park Road, Wednesday, May 1st, 2019. And it is about 7:12. It was preceded by our special meeting in closed session at 5:45. So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you like to make a roll call, please?
Again. Sure. Councilmember Lacks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goddard.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
And Mayor Coler.
Here. So I'd like to make an announcement of our closed-session item. Typically, the, and I'm gonna read a statement. Typically, the Town Council would not comment on closed-session items. However, due to significant public interest in the matter, the council will share its direction on the topic. First, it should be noted that the closed session is listed, so staff has an opportunity to discuss with the entire council the item listed. Otherwise, the Brown Act prohibits staff from discussing with council members individually their thoughts regarding the issue. Thus, the Town Council is being transparent in its consideration of this matter. With regard to the closed session, the council did discuss a conceptual verbal proposal from the managing partner of the Miranda Heights property, also known as the Wall property, to purchase 10 acres of an existing 18-acre parcel west of Ridgeway for $500,000. The council has directed staff to, the council has decided not to further explore the conceptual proposal regarding Miranda Heights property at this time. Public comment on closed-session items is listed and received prior to the closed session. We received none. There will be no further discussion of this issue at this meeting. Please note that with regard to the Miranda Heights development application, council members cannot opine on the merits of the application until it is brought to the council for consideration after a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The request for proposal for the environmental impact report consultant has not yet been issued, so it'll be quite some time before the Planning Commission and council consider the application. Thank you. So now I'd like an approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting. A motion, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that was Councilmember Lacks, first, and second, Ackerman. Any opposed, seeing none? I will now read the meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of councilmembers, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place them in the silent mode. The council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. So some announcements. Vacancies on town boards and commissions. There are up to three vacancies on the Climate Action Committee, two vacancies on open space, one vacancy on the Tree Committee. Two terms on the Planning Commission are expiring at the end of May. Applications and information are available at Town Hall at www.townoffairfax.org and by contacting the Town Clerk, Michelle Gardner. So something exciting. The Parkade ribbon-cutting ceremony will be held this Friday, May 3rd, at 9:30 AM at the Parkade steps on Broadway. Yay! There, it will be open after the ribbon-cutting for use, and there will be a few more items that'll be continued, a few what we call punch-list items. I will also say our town manager has arranged for an area that there will be one last pouring of cement, and if you have children young enough not to be in school, you can bring them so they can do handprints in the concrete. So we're so excited, we're finally here. And next, meet the new artists in residence. Susan Pascal Baran and Georgia Gibbs on Saturday, May 4th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Pavilion in conjunction with Open Studios. Couple things to point out for those of you who aren't familiar is we have an Artisan Residents Collaborative. And I'm sorry, I'm either speaking too far away or too close, so I'm working on it. And our first artisan residence is Stephanie Mohan, a photographer whom many of you know, who's been taking a lot of photographs. And we now have three, Georgia Gibbs, who's a painter, and Susan Pascal Baran, who's an international sculptress. So we have an embarrassment of riches, just amazing people as our artists collaborative. Also, Perry Park Cleanup Day, Saturday, May 18th, 10:00 to 12:00 noon, which is followed by a barbecue lunch with our Ross Valley firefighters, noon to 2:00 PM in front of the community center. If you're not familiar with that, that's right next to the fire station. It's a fundraiser for the Perry Park renovation project, which we hope we can get completed this year. The Fairfax Festival is Saturday through Sunday, June 8th through 9th, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The parade is at 10:00 AM on Saturday, so hopefully most of you can come out. Fairfax Community Showcase, Friday, May 17th, 6:30 PM, at the Women's Club. It's a benefit for the Fairfax Food Pantry sponsored by the Fairfax Volunteers. The Food Pantry. So that's Saturdays, 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are always needed. Just remind folks that if you need food, you don't need to show proof of need, you don't even need to show that you live here, just show up. And we need volunteers. We have a lot of volunteers in the morning, so if you're interested in volunteering, if possible, try to come later, like 10:30 to 11:00 when we're, there's only a couple people volunteering. So Renee, you have some announcements.
Yes, you all might have felt the festivity in the air, and that is because the farmer's market opened today. So happy May Day. And if you leave the meeting prior to the closure at 8:00, you can go by and get some wonderful fruits and vegetables. Please attend, please purchase your, um, your fresh foods from our farmer's market. The farmers need and appreciate everything that we do to support them, and we are very excited to have them back. So every Wednesday through the summer, actually, I think it's through September, from 4:00 to 8:00, in Belinas Park. Thanks.
Thanks. Did anyone else have any announcements? No? Okay. So we're moving on to open time for public expression. To address the council on matters not on the agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address, which are optional. Depending on the number of speakers, individuals have two to three minutes to speak, four to five minutes if representing a group. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any unagendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature, or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Can I ask how many people want to speak in open time? Looks like quite a few, so I'm, I'm gonna exercise my discretion and say two minutes for individuals. Those speaking on behalf of a group will have four minutes, and only one member of that group can get the four minutes. So with that, please step up to the podium, and thank you very much. And if you feel comfortable doing so, state your name and address.
Tom O'Neill, Fairfax, California. Hi, everybody. I just want to address some very unsettling news that happened recently about a woman that was killed in a, in a crosswalk on Butterfield Road about three, four nights ago. And there's very little media coverage of it, but she was walking her two dogs. She was killed by a driver that was under the influence of alcohol, from what I believe, from what I have read about the scant news reporting that's been done on, on it. And I'd just like to say that, you know, I've been a school crossing guard for close to 13 years now, and in fact, I used to be the school crossing guard at Lower Brookside School, and at one time I was, for a very short time, the crossing guard at Upper Brookside. And I know that area well, and I know how bad the situation is with people that drive too fast and are not paying attention. And I, I raised my voice about it and was fired from my location as a result of that. I'd also like to say that, I also heard some unsettling news. A point that is really, really, really sad is that we're fast approaching the point where there will be more plastic in our oceans than there are fish. And I'll bet these young people know more about that than I do. And maybe they can elucidate on that if they, one of them will get up and speak a public comment about, about that fact. And, and most of the, uh, most of the businesses in town are replacing plastic with paper. I think the only real holdouts right now are the bars that have the really thin little red straws. So anyway, I wish I had another minute for more stuff, but I know. Thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. Um, just to be sure, can I speak about the cannabis issue?
No, that's item 13.
I apologize, I wasn't...
It's okay.
I don't see it agenda anywhere, so...
The agenda is on the safe out there?
Okay.
I'm, it's kind of a safe, but...
All right.
It is a safe, okay. Good evening.
Ronnie Cohen, good evening. I live on Live Oak Avenue, and I'm here today to talk about this report. Have you all read it?
I don't think we know what the report is, so maybe just give us the...
The grand jury report on wildfire preparedness.
So it was sent to the council, and we will be responding to it at our June meeting.
Great. So I, I have read the report, and I want to say that I was dismayed to read that the grand jury has issued five prior reports on this subject. And I hope that this time around, we can do something more about preparing for wildfires. I, for one, am absolutely terrified. I can't, I can't stress enough how scared I am. And I can't imagine that there's anything more important for this council to address at this time. So there have been five reports issued, we continue to do nothing. And in fact, from where I sit on Live Oak, it used to be that the firefighters would come around and they would check out the vegetation and overgrowth, and now they don't do anything. They don't come anymore. So I don't understand why that's happening, but I certainly hope that that can be rectified, and we can get back to making sure that the vegetation is cut back. The report says we're living in a powder keg. And I'd also like to say, another excerpt from the report is Marin County has failed to manage its vegetation adequately and its evacuation roots are narrow and overgrown. The public is not sufficiently prepared or drilled in evacuation procedures, and first responders cannot handle evacuation events with the speed and scale required by the new, now routinely occurring mega fires. So I don't know if a county-wide agency, which is what the grand jury suggests is the answer. I know I'm done, but if you would give me one more minute. I'm representing my husband, who's in the audience.
Okay, that's not a group. So I just want to wrap it up and just mention to you that we started the fire inspection program again, we're, we're contributing towards that. We do chipper days, we're, and we are involved with Katie Rice, who's convened a group of members, all members of the county. So we are moving on, and thank you very much for your comments, and we'll be looking forward...
Let me just have one...
I'm shaking. I just want you to know that I'm absolutely shaking with fear.
Could I, Mayor, if I could just have one suggestion?
Sure.
I, I have a property on Live Oak, too, and it, the very dry, south-facing slope. There are a number of firewise communities forming in Fairfax, and you could organize a group in that neighborhood, that would be great. You can find information at firewisemarin.org.
I have done all of that, and I am prepared. But my neighborhood is not, and I implore you to help the Town of Fairfax to get ready, because what could be more important?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
In fact, there's huge efforts going on on that thing. We have several firewise communities.
Okay, so state your name and address if you feel comfortable doing so, and you need to speak into the mic. Thank you.
Ted Pugh, Acacia Road. Mayor Coler and council members, please excuse me for reading from prepared text. I'm respecting how full your agenda is, and I want to explain my request as briefly as possible. Emails were sent to you this afternoon with supporting information to my statements. As some of you know, after many years in the works, my new home on Acacia Road started construction last summer. Construction had to be postponed until this year for technical geotech reasons ahead of the rainy season. The hillside site was winterized at considerable cost. Delay this past winter has cost the project considerably. Fortunately, in the last couple of years, the state's housing landscape has changed with legislation encouraging accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. Unfortunately, after months working with staff toward filing an ADU application submitted in early February, I've been notified by the town that the town is prepared to deny a permit for a legally permissible ADU in my new home. Briefly, in line with state regulations, my proposed ADU of under 400 square feet meets all the town's requirements to be allowed.
So, Mr. Pugh, let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this, any matters get appealed to the council, so bringing a matter before us now is not gonna help?
I have no intention of bringing it before now, 'cause I, let me finish, 'cause it's real quick.
Okay.
The ADU would fit into the approved envelope of the new house like an attic, have required exterior access that's on the property and is supported by the adjacent 19 Acacia neighbor and the Ross Valley Fire Department as an alternative evacuation route on the hillside. It would adhere to Fairfax zoning, floor area ratio, and parking requirements. Town staff are rightly looking at the town's codes and its ADU ordinance. I disagree with staff's interpretation of my case. The same can be said for my lawyer and apparently the state's Housing and Community Development Department. Their housing analyst, with whom I've been working, stated to me today, the HCD would send a letter to the town in support of my ADU in my new home. It may take a while, they're submitting many letters around the state on this very thing. For reason outlined in legal opinion, I provided to staff at their request, there is no legal case for denial. I realize you'll be the appellate body, and can't discuss nor take action until an appeals filed should my application be denied. I urge you to check with staff to see if we can save time and money by promptly responding to my ADU application.
Let's wrap it up, you're over the two minutes.
I request the town do the right thing, as demonstrated, because it's supported ADUs.
Okay, that's...
And help me build my ADU.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, state your name and address if you feel comfortable doing so.
Shelley Hamilton, 134 Canyon Road. I'm here with a group of people who are gonna come up after me to hopefully start this meeting, and maybe others with a bit of gratitude for you all. We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, have selected you all, our neighbors, our friends, colleagues that we have worked with and celebrated with in this community for many, many years, to represent us in governing our common good, and we appreciate you for that. We don't always agree with you, but there are many out there who really appreciate everything that you do for this community. You are all good people with big hearts, strong minds, immense patience. I trust you to make decisions on behalf of all of us, and in the best entrance, best interest of my great-grandchildren, who may live in my house someday, of my neighbor who has not yet moved in here, and my 89-year-old across the street, all of whom are unlikely to show up to these meetings, or send you emails, or post on social media, but who, no less than anyone else, deserves your consideration and appreciates all that you do for them now and in the future. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I know that you have many difficult decisions before you tonight and in the future. before you tonight and in the future, and have in the past, and I hope that we can approach you as our neighbors and our friends, our colleagues, people we celebrate with, and appreciate what you do for us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's very kind. Lovely. Thank you, Shelley. Beautiful.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm going to be real quick. We're just absolutely thrilled that it's May, and it seems like a great time to be grateful. I did want to mention that this last month, since I live right downtown, I've been really watching the parcade and mono alley restoration unfold, and been really more excited about it than I thought I would. So I'm really happy, actually, that there's an opening that I can go to this Friday, because I'm really appreciative that we're doing all of the accessibility features. Also, the wayfinding across the parcade to the flashy lights and across to the other side of town is super nice, and I'm also just really happy to see that the trees are going to be given more space, and that I hope over time, as the older trees die out, we replace them with trees that are more appropriate for that surrounding, that we can love and nurture over the years, as the people who planted those original trees did. I also just want to give a big shout out to town staff for being so willing to talk to me in recent months, when I've had numerous questions about things that have puzzled me that I've seen on social media and have directed me, have spent a lot of time talking to me, including Mark Lockaby, who is really wonderful, and I really had a window into the amazing work that he does through having a conversation with him. So I'm really appreciative of town staff being so willing to talk to those of us who are puzzled about things and let us know more about what's going on, and referring us to resources so that we can figure stuff out on our own. So that's really all I wanted to say. Just really appreciate a lot of the good work that's been done in town, and I should also say, when I'm talking about the parcade, that I'm also really appreciative of my friend Wendy for really working on the accessibility issue. So anyway, thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Roberts at 93 Scenic Road, and I'm thankful for all sorts of things that you guys do. I'm thankful for your support of the age-friendly initiatives, thankful for your support of the Firewise communities, and that all of you are participating in those. Those make a big difference to us residents. So many of us can't get here every month, but you are here, and you're studying these issues, and you're putting a lot of volunteer hours in, and we appreciate the recycling, the e-recycling that you just did, and the shredding event, approving the affordable senior housing. My god, did that need to be done? And you got it done, and so just thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the things that you do for this town.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Shelby Lamott, 56 Manor Road. I'm here to try to help bring some positivity to this process, and there's been a lot of negativity out there in the air, and it's stinking up the place, and I'm really tired of it. And so we're going to be here as a presence to bring positivity and thankfulness and gratefulness. Thank you for all you do. I mean, three of you are people I've worked with on the Planning Commission. John's worked so hard for the 20 years that I've been here, and probably longer. Barbara was amazing on Planning Commission. Renee with Sustainable Fairfax and bringing the kids and working so hard. I think it's lost on some people how many hours you guys put in to serve us, and we as neighbors and friends just want to say it out loud and put it out in the air to have some better energy going on, and just thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the work that you're doing. It's not lost on us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shelby.
My name is Rebecca Collins. I live at Monte Vista Road, and I'm also here to show my appreciation for everyone on the council and everyone on the staff, for your time and dedication, your service to this community. And, you know, Fairfax has always been a cutting-edge community, and this council is not an exception to that. And I think we see a lot of the county follow the lead of Fairfax often, and I really appreciate that, and just everything that you do, and your research into best practices, and all the time spent on committees, and all the numerous things that a lot of us probably don't even know, including myself. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Rebecca.
Hi, Jennifer Hammond. Just want to ditto the comments made by the people before me. You are our friends, you are our neighbors. You work so hard and put so many hours into these very difficult issues, and just so grateful for that. And I'm just looking at this town council, every single one of you have a passion for the environment. Like, we are so lucky. We are so lucky to have you guys. Your support for all these incredible town initiatives, Sustainable Fairfax, community events, Take Back Day, Streets for People, the list is so long. So I'm going to keep my comments brief. Thanks so much, so much gratitude.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council of Kiki Laporta, Glen Drive. There's not much more I can say beyond what my friends and colleagues and neighbors have already said, but I want it to be known in public that yours are volunteer positions. You put in tremendous number of hours, almost as much as a regular paying job, which this is not. You endure a lot of uncomfortable situations that are not of your making, and in our little town of Fairfax, we are known throughout the county and the region as being a leader in so many things. And that comes with a lot of decision-making, a lot of challenges, and a lot of hard work. And you guys are putting it in on our behalf, and I'm very, very grateful to you for all of that work, and especially for your hearts. I trust you. I know that you have the best for Fairfax and all our community at heart. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, David Haskell at Glen Drive, and I, too, want to express my gratitude. But I want to especially thank you for maintaining the values that I think are so intrinsically important in Fairfax. The values of inclusion, the values of kindness, and the values of compassion, that we're dealing with people. People need places to live. People need places to work. And we, this is no time in our history to build walls. We are confronted with the massive amounts of change, and preservation for preservation's sake does not necessarily give us the best outcome. And I would like to ensure that, and thank you for looking after those values, because it's the values that I knew in Fairfax long ago that we take care of one another, all of us. So thank you very much for your work. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, David.
Dear council members, Lena Maria Estrella, 19 Muriel Place. I'm only a baby here. I've only been here about eight, almost nine years, and I have been astounded by your integrity, your compassion, seeing you out there doing the work, not just talking about it. And I believe it takes great courage and grace to open your hearts and your minds with all the difference of opinion that we have here, and truly listen to the people you represent. I feel heard. You step up to the plate every day, and you act from a place of integrity. I see Renee at the Civic Center digging for the fair, digging through all the recycling bins and sorting them all out in the boiling sun, not really having a fun day, but it's fun because she loves the earth, and she loves all the creation, all the animals, all the birds, everything that's affected. So I'm very grateful that you're such a green council, and I do bow with a deep heart of gratitude.
Thank you.
Hi, dear council, Mark Vendetti, Muriel Place. I can echo with great gratitude the comments of those who've come before me, and express my awe at the amazing town council that we have here. I don't know how you all really hold it together and get it done with such busy lives and such a full plate of really important things to consider here in our town, and without always having the support of the town residents, in fact, taking a lot of abuse frequently from social media these days and other venues. You would think that you weren't appreciated, and yet you still show up. You still take on the hard issues with courage and grit, and this town wouldn't be what it is without people like you to hold our values together. And the zero-waste program, the smart meter program, sidewalk grants, the amazing improvements to the parcade, the coordination of the rest of the group to pull together parking at the, you know, to help an uninterrupted flow of people to enjoy this town while this big upheaval of a project was going on. I just want you to know, it's very, very much appreciated and noticed by many, many, many of us, and we want to continually remind you of that, and thank you very much for a job well done.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi, Cindy Swift, Fairfax. On a different.
So Cindy, you may want to speak a little more. Thank you.
With the parcade ribbon-cutting ceremony on Friday, I checked online to see for any updates on some of the other aspects of the parcade, and it would be great if the town could provide an update on the bus stop structure going forward. I'm not aware that we've got a volunteer in town willing to lead that effort. I'm not aware that that individual's been contacted at all.
He's going to contact our town manager directly now that the parcade is almost finished.
So he's aware that.
Yes, he is.
He can start that? Okay, great. And then as far as, I'm not sure when the bus itself is going to move over, so just if we can get some information on those two items.
I think some of those details, we'll learn more as we get closer, or even right past May 3rd.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Jody Timms, Cascade Drive, and here with your, my report on the Commission on Aging and the Activities. I want to start by thanking, first of all, the staff who aren't here, but Camille, and Anne, and Maria, and Michelle helped me on a regular basis, and I really, really appreciate it, as well as all of you. I know you do, too, behind the scenes. So I really think we have a fabulous staff and want to appreciate them for that, for their help and support, and also for all of your support for older adults. I feel very much that you care about this issue and appreciate also my position representing the town. So quickly, tomorrow is the Commission on Aging's annual forum. It's celebrated, this is Older Adults Month, so at the Four Points Sheridan, from 9:00 to 1:00, there'll be two speakers talking about dental health and oral, or, excuse me, auditory health. So if you want to go, that's $20, but there's scholarships also available. Age-friendly Fairfax, we have a, finally got finished with our senior discount flyer. So there are some of these in the back. There are 11 businesses in Fairfax that offer a discount of one kind or another for folks, sort of 50, 55, and up. So pick that up if you have any interest and need some of that help and support financially. We'll be tabling at the Fairfax EcoFest, Age-friendly Fairfax. In the county, we have a new age-friendly city. Belvedere was accepted into the network, so that's nine of the 11 so far. And on May 24th, speaking of Firewise, Maggie Lang will be coming to the library from 1:00 to 2:00 that day and doing a presentation on Ready, Set, Go, being prepared for fire, flood, and earthquake, particularly with tips for seniors, knowing your neighbors, having your food so you can shelter in place, having your grab bag so you can get out with materials you need, and having your emergency plan so you know where you might go and where you might stay. Other activities are on our flyer, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody.
Good evening.
Monty.
Hi, Monty Stevens, Porteous Avenue. I'll be very brief. I also wanted to come down and just show my support of council. I think that a lot has already been said and mentioned. I did have the opportunity to work with many of you when I served on Park and Rec for nine years, Garrett as well, who I really enjoyed working with. And I tell you, I just don't like to hear this negativity, this bashing behind closed doors. It's unnecessary, and it's unwelcome. So I'm just here to show my support. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, Monty. So if you've already spoken in open time, oh, it's on the Climate Action Committee? Okay.
Yes.
You get a two for two.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, again, and also thank you, staff. Kiki Laporta, Glen Drive, David Haskell, and I have been on the climate action, the town of Fairfax Climate Action Committee since its inception. We were trying to figure it out, I think it's five years. Is that right, Bruce? Yeah. And we were very delighted that our council supports this committee, which is designated and charged with helping our town operations, as well as our community, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and draw down greenhouse from the atmosphere. We'd like to present you tonight the annual action plan that we have developed within the committee, and also to let the public know, and our television viewers know, what we're doing.
All right, so we have nine different items. Our first item, and I think we thank you for doing this already, is that we've recognized that there is a climate emergency in the resolution in support of net zero for the Fairfax Climate Action Plan.
Number two, complete our Climate Action Plan update with a vision statement reflective of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2030.
The committee will also recommend ordinances and resolutions to the Fairfax Town Council for the purpose of achieving net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2030.
Number four, support Fairfax town operations becoming carbon neutral.
Five, we support a draft vulnerability assessment related to climate change risks.
Number six, support local and county climate change events and related actions.
And number seven, support efforts to electrify everything and optimize energy efficiency.
Number eight, support and promote transportation as a service.
And we have three programs that we'd like to also encourage. One is the Ring Clean Energy, encourage all households and businesses to switch to deep green, 100% renewable. In Fairfax, Sustainable Fairfax, we're supporting their reduced by two low-carbon transportation program, and also within the context of the Sustainable Fairfax, the composting of food and green waste and promoting reusables over single use.
And lastly, a very effective program that's countywide, that until recently Fairfax had the greatest percentage of participants so far, Resilient Neighborhoods. We will encourage and assist every Fairfax household and business to measure and reduce their carbon emissions. Thank you again, council and staff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Victor Harris. I live at 160 Willow Avenue. I join in all the favorable comments that have been made towards the council tonight. However, my primary purpose was to come here to comment on what you took up in closed session. It was my understanding that that proposal was designed to create 10 additional acres of open space at the upper part of the wall property, with the Marin Open Space Trust being part of the transaction, as well as the town and the county using Measure A funds. If the entire wall property development went forward, there would be an additional traffic burden on the Willow Avenue Canyon, which, as you know, is already overburdened by traffic. It'd be a hell to get out of here. It'd be a hell to get out of here in a fire. Apparently, due to insufficient funds, the town missed the boat to purchase all of that wall property long ago as open space. Let's not miss the boat again for this small portion. And third, there's no downside to the proposal. As I understood your statement, Ms. Kohler, that the EIR needs to go forward, it'd be much simpler to take up this transaction first and say yes or no on it, because if you say yes on it, which you should for numerous reasons, it makes the EIR just that much simpler to do. So for all the reasons that this proposal should go through, would you please agendize this issue?
Thank you.
Whether to approve the proposal for full public discussion at a council meeting in June.
Thank you. You've exceeded your time. Thank you for your comment. We're not going to discuss the closed-session item. I've read the statement. Thank you very much for your comments.
I didn't have a statement. I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, well, you've read your comments. Thank you very much.
Then the Willow Avenue Canyon residents will petition for this to be a public issue.
Thank you.
Richard Applebaum, 61 Woodland. A few brief comments regarding fire. It's wonderful when neighborhoods can get the firewise, but that is not going to save us. The issues about the fuel load are really, really serious, so I understand that Fairfax alone cannot tackle all of this, but really hope that we can go beyond just come to a meeting about firewise, because when the stuff that has nothing to do with people's private property just goes up, we're all going to be done. There's a lot of rumors going around town about wall property and about this purchasing or whatever. Several of us were at a meeting a few months ago at St. Rita's. Former councilmember Weinsdorf came in there talking about Rothman's proposal, and I echo the last speaker that we should get some more clarity and clear information out into the public. And then regarding all the lovely platitudes for council tonight, which I don't know why all these people came tonight, I don't know if it has something to do with cameras or whatever, there's a lot of concern in this town, and there are a lot of people that aren't happy with the way things are going on, and there's a lot of mistrust. And so, again, I encourage transparency, clarity, straightforwardness, and as much dialogue as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since I have only slightly marginal hearing, I'll speak up for myself.
Thank you.
But in any case, I was here because of a newspaper article, and I didn't hear the name come up in the roll call, in the agenda, and nobody's come up with the name yet. Dan, what's his name? Carney?
Don Carney.
Don Carney.
He's sitting near the front.
Okay.
That's for item 13, which is agendized later.
Okay, so I should back off till?
Yeah, maybe a little later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Frank Agar, 13 men away. At the last meeting, I asked about the status of the environmental impact report for the proposed wall property subdivision above Miranda Oaks. No one knew last month the answer. I was told it would be answered offline. I'm not sure what that means, but that was a month ago and still no answer. So tonight, I just have two questions. The first is, has the owner of the wall property waived the time constraints under the law for Fairfax to go through the environmental impact report process, have it prepared? You're under some time constraints, and there's a time clock running, and I don't know if you've started yet. Then the second question is, when will you start the EIR process? Thank you.
Thank you. We're not going to be discussing closed-session items, or the open time is for items not on the agenda. So I read out that the RFP has not yet been issued, and once it's issued, the EIR will start, and we expect that in a few months.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Batwin, and I live in Fairfax. I just, I wanted to give a shout-out of gratitude to the police department. Last weekend, I forget which day exactly it was, and as a hospice volunteer and an animal lover, there was a raccoon next to me on Bellinas that had clearly just been hit, that I didn't see that part happen, but witnessed the most horrific traumatizing death next to me, watching this raccoon literally seize and bleed out, and it was awful. And I pulled over and I called the police department, and I could not believe how sweet they were that I was calling about a raccoon. And they showed up instantly, and a newer police officer, Kennerly, literally protected the raccoon until it could be moved safely out of the road, so it didn't get continuously run over while it was dying and after it died. And I just wanted to thank the police department for the way they responded for my request for help around a raccoon dying. And then I also just want to say that I'm really grateful and proud about witnessing how the parcade project has come along, and I feel really proud about and happy to see, after all these years of asking for the ADA access to be better downtown, that it really is happening. And I had a very sweet meeting a few times now with a Chinese man who speaks almost no English whatsoever, but we had a lot of beautiful sign language and words that we did share, and then a little bit of Google Translate. And he lives at Bennett House, and we were, he was just nonstop watching the project and thanking everybody for it. And I just, for myself, I just want to say a thank you for passing the rental laws that have been passed, and I-
Thank you, Wendy. We've got to wrap it up.
Okay. Just quickly, I just personally, I'm about to be pushed out of my own home here in Fairfax, and I don't want to leave, so there's nothing out for rent, and I just wanted to put a shout-out for I want to stay in our town.
Thank you, Wendy.
Mark Bell, Domingo Avenue. Sorry to break up the love fest. A few months ago, you hired for $25,000 a consultant to look at the new sanitation fees. So when I questioned you about it, you said that we've done this many times in the past, and they saved us a lot of money. So I don't have the actual figures, but I'm thinking, okay, if there's 3,000 households in Fairfax, give or take a few. So Marin Sanitary was looking for 22%. The consultant that we hired got them to come all the way down to 19.34%. So using 3,000 households or users as a metric to work this out, the net savings that we're looking at is maybe 8 cents a month. That could go up a few pennies or down a few pennies. So that's $25,000 less to deal with firesafe Fairfax, to look at various paths, like Mallory has brought up several times, where trees have blocked escape routes, but that's $25,000 that we don't have. And yet, we continue on and on in the same vein with 5G. It would seem to me that in the six months since the emergency regulation, what are the attorney's fees on that? I remember Larry Bragman saying that we could just adopt Mill Valleys because they had it wired. It was an excellent legislative piece to block 5G, but we go on and on and on. We just paid another $80,000 in attorney's fees. That's another $80,000. This lady's trembling because she's afraid she's going to get burned up.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Bye.
Michael?
Good evening, Council. Couple points. I'm always amused when I see all the discussions going on with the town trying to acquire the wall property, because if you recall, back in 2006, I worked out a deal with Allen Wall, so I could give that property to the town of Fairfax at no cost. Putting that aside for a moment, it is discouraging when I see the council, as well-intended as might be, not following the law. If you look at your California Code 6250 through 6272, for any closed session, if there is any direction of staff, which requires the expenditure of public funds, upon request of the close of that closed session, it must be disclosed to the public what the direction of that meeting was. It's very simple. So again, if somebody makes a request to you-
Michael, I read a statement that disclosed that. Maybe you weren't here.
I was here for the statement.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, just for everybody, including staff, should there be any expenditure of public funds, including direction of staff to do something, create a report, create a response? That expenditure of public funds requires the governing body to, upon public request, to disclose the disposition and conclusion of that closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak in open time who hasn't spoken already? So bringing it back, one thing I want to clarify from the meeting last week, some people had some questions about the Marin Telecommunications Agency and my role in that. I'm the chair of that agency, and that agency does not have jurisdiction over cellular. That agency is a joint powers agency, which represents nine cities and towns in Marin and the county of Marin. That agency is largely responsible for overseeing the work of the Community Media Center of Marin. These are the folks who are here filming the government channel. They also provide public and education channels. And also, we ensure that each city and town in the county receives franchise fees from cable operations. We also take a look at legislation that may be impacting, or negatively or positively impacting telecommunications, and we weigh in on that. At my request, we joined the BBK Coalition that is fighting some of the rules that the FCC is proceeding with, that is taking away local control. So I just wanted to clarify that, and just to remind folks, there's no payment for participating in that agency and no financial benefit. And Larry Bragman served on it prior to me. So with that, we will move on to our consent calendar.
Mayor, prior to that, might I just ask what the film production is that's going on? I'm just curious.
Channel 2.
Oh, okay. Welcome.
Maybe putting the muffle back on will help. Okay, so let's move on, and I want to thank everyone who spoke in open time. Folks positive or providing some feedback that is a little different, so we appreciate all that. Consent calendar. So did anyone on the council want to ask a question on the consent calendar or pull something from consent?
I just had a question, number five, Mayor. So in the endorsing of the declaration of the climate emergency, is that the same declaration that we did as a separate item?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So they had their own resolution, and I felt that we had done a much stronger resolution, so we would send them ours. So it's the one that I signed subsequent to the April meeting, or March, I forget when we did that, but we felt ours was much stronger. So seeing no other questions, did anyone from the public want to comment on a matter on consent? Okay, seeing none, bringing it back. I'd like to ask for a motion on the consent calendar.
Motion. Oh, go ahead, John.
Well, I'd move consent.
I'll second.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Reed, and second was Councilmember Lax. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bringing it back, so that matter passes. Moving on to a presentation, and this presentation is the damage caused by the production and consumption of single-use plastics and disposable foodware. One of the things I want to note on this item is we won't, so typically on presentations, we don't take comments or make comments. We tend to do that in Fairfax, but because we have a very full agenda and a lot of folks here to speak on, particularly item 13, maybe others, we're going to have a full-throated discussion on this item at our June meeting, so you'll have more opportunities, and I hope that Perry Russell will be able to come back for that. So with that, I think you're going to do a pretty short presentation.
Yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Perry Russell. I'm a senior at Drake High School and an intern at Sustainable Fairfax, and tonight I will be speaking to you about the detrimental effects that single-use plastics and disposable food service ware have on the environment and human health. Two generations ago, reusability and resource conservation were the norm, but ever since the invention of plastic, we have been living in a throwaway culture. This has led to a proliferation of plastics in our food, air, and drinking water. 80% of the single-use plastics found in our ocean began as street litter, running into storm drains and out to the ocean. Plastics never biodegrade. They break down into tiny little pieces called microplastics, which are then ingested by wildlife, which usually cause death. These microplastics are found in the seafood we eat. In addition, plastics contain harmful chemicals. Many of you have heard of BPA, but that is not the only harmful chemical in plastics. These chemicals are endocrine and hormone disruptors, which can cause birth defects and cancer. In addition to the well-known chemicals in plastics, fluorinated chemicals are an additive in food packaging that lock in grease and water. They have proven toxic effects in both humans and other animals. The chemicals from single-use packaging leach into food, drinks, and our waterways and soil. These chemicals disrupt hormones, accelerate cancer development, and can alter healthy growth in children. The production of plastics and other packaging requires immense inputs of fossil fuels, energy, and water. As we try to mitigate the dire consequences of climate change, we must change our habits to favor reusable and compostable over single-use disposables that go to the landfill. Things are already being done. Fairfax has historically taken the lead in progressive ordinances, such as requiring residential composting and mandatory commercial recycling. Restrictions on single-use items have been adopted in other cities and towns and would be the next logical step for us to take here in Fairfax. Living in a coastal area makes it even more imperative that we take bold action to tackle the issue of disposables. Of the litter that enters the San Francisco Bay, a study from 2011 found that 67% of that was food and beverage packaging. Also, as Redwood Landfill approaches full capacity and with little room for expansion of WM Earth Care composting facilities housed at Redwood Landfill, it is imperative that we begin to transition to a system focused on reusables, as opposed to single-use items. We know that recycling is not the answer. Over a year ago, China and many other Asian countries who previously purchased the mass majority of our recycling closed their borders to plastics and most mixed paper. With no markets, our plastic trash is piling up in the limited space in the yards at our recycling centers, waiting for a market to open, often to no avail. A perceived solution that many establishments have turned to is compostable plastics. These plastics are not accepted by our local composting facility, and it can take many years for them to break down, buried in anaerobic environments inside the landfill. Compostable plastics also do not solve the solution of plastics accumulating in the ocean, because like regular plastic, they do not biodegrade in the ocean. I encourage you to begin discussion and receive public comment on an ordinance in order to significantly reduce the harm caused by single-use food service ware. Progressive policies become models for other communities, both nationally and globally. Please continue Fairfax's legacy as environmental pioneers by introducing an ordinance to reduce the damage caused by single-use plastic, and shift the paradigm from a disposable to a- reuse culture. Thank you.
That was excellent. So again, this will be agendized for our June fifth meeting, so if you have comments or want to hear more, there'll be more opportunities to do so, so thank you very much. Great work. So now we're moving on to our regular agenda, and I think there's several people here wanting to speak on this topic. This will be to discuss regulations pertaining to certain commercial cannabis uses, including storefront retail and delivery-only businesses, non-commercial cannabis cultivation, cannabis business permit process, and scoring criteria for applications. And Garrett, did you want to, are you going to do a presentation?
Ben will.
Okay, but are you going to provide the staff report? How are we doing? Ben will.
Ben.
Okay. And is there a copy? This presentation is here, is there a copy, hard copy on the safe out there? Okay, because it's here. Okay, great. Thank you, Ben. Ben Berto, our planning director, will give the presentation. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the Town Council. This cannabis discussion has been going on for a year and a half at the town level. This is a brief recitation of the prior discussions that the Town Council and Planning Commission have undertaken. As you can see, there have been fourteen public meetings to date, and in addition, a panel discussion and a survey. Significantly, the Town Council acted last November to enact a one-year moratorium on consideration of most commercial cannabis businesses. That moratorium is scheduled to expire at the end of October, so we are under a time clock at this time. The Planning Commission conducted seven meetings on cannabis, and at the last two, they were reviewing actual ordinance proposals prepared by staff. And at their last meeting on April eleventh, staff had told them in March that the April eleventh meeting would have to be the wrap-up meeting in order to provide your Town Council with sufficient opportunity to look at the regulations and take action prior to expiration of the moratorium. At that April eleventh Planning Commission meeting, they did review those cannabis regulations. It's noted that under our town code, you need to have at least five planning commissioners to make an affirmative recommendation on any resolution to the Town Council, and insofar as there were only five planning commission members there, it would have required a 5-0 vote. The commission did ultimately vote against the ordinance three-two, but as the minutes will show, and you have copies of the minutes from both the March and April meetings in your packet, that the Planning Commission did consider each and every aspect of both chapters of the town code being proposed in the ordinance before you tonight, and reached majority consensus on many of those topics. So the resolution failed, but there's really useful direction, staff believes, from the Planning Commission in their review. In terms of the substantive policy issues before you tonight, rather than dive into the regulations and probably never get through them, staff felt it was best to focus on several of the large topics and larger issues with which this town has been grappling for this last year and a half. These can be broadly broken down into which categories of commercial use are acceptable. In, as will be discussed further, it was recommended by the Planning Commission to eliminate categories of use such as cannabis temporary events, commercial cannabis cultivation, cannabis manufacturing, or cannabis product manufacturing, testing laboratories, distribution businesses, and microbusinesses. Another significant issue for your consideration has to do with potential commercial uses that were considered as possibilities, and those specifically are medical or adult use, recreational storefront retails, and delivery. So two different types of storefront retail and a delivery component. Another topic, a substantial topic for the commission's deliberation and for prior council direction, in fact, has to do with personal medical, personal and medical cultivation. So those two aspects were discussed at some length. Another topic has to do with the locations of potential businesses, and this is tied up with both the state mandated buffer setback distances from schools, youth centers, and daycare centers, and the number of businesses that might be potentially allowed. Chapter 5.56 under our business code deals with details of the permit process, and although the Planning Commission doesn't, isn't per se involved in reviewing that process, because there is some participation proposed for the commission in that process, and because they were looking at the overall regulations of which this is a part, the Planning Commission did review the permitting process and make certain recommendations. It's also noted that something that the Planning Commission first looked at at their last meeting has to do with scoring criteria. That's kind of a detail of the proposed business permit process. That would not be part of these regulations. If this moves forward, it would be part of their review for potential cannabis businesses. And then finally, there was recommendations regarding the existing medical marijuana dispensary in Fairfax. In terms of commercial uses, in your Town Council's initial discussion, and the Planning Commission agreed that the following commercial uses would be eliminated from consideration at this time. And as noted, these would be cannabis temporary events, commercial cultivation, manufacturing, testing laboratories, distribution businesses, and microbusinesses. Insofar as there is some interest in the local business community in microbusinesses, the Planning Commission did express an interest in revisiting the microbusiness and manufacturing topics in the future. In terms of commercial cannabis types and numbers, and this is one of the more challenging topics that the commission looked at, they did agree with the Town Council that the only three basic types of businesses would be allowed: medical retail, adult-use retail, and delivery use. So those are the ones that they were focusing on in their discussions. In their discussions, they came to the conclusion that any combination of those three types of businesses would be the most appropriate for consideration in any location. In other words, rather than try to segregate, oh, we should have a delivery business at this location, or a medical here or there, in their conversations about the numbers of businesses at any location, they felt that any combination of the three at that location would be considered one business location. Although they did not recommend a specific number in their discussions, and you can see from the minutes on the topic, they generally winnowed it down to between one and three business locations. And they also recommended to continue to allow the existing medical dispensary with an adult-use medical, or excuse me, retail-delivery-only adjunct. So this is in a separate business, it's immediately next door to the existing dispensary. In terms of personal cultivation, the Town Council has previously opined that a total of six plants should be allowed on a property, whether or not it's indoors or outdoors or medical or for adult use. So the council didn't differentiate between the types, and they felt that it would be appropriate to cap it at a total of six plants at any one time, and those are mature plants. The Planning Commission, in the course of their detailed deliberations, recommended continuing to allow a total of six mature plants, whether indoors, and it's noted that the state regulations mandate that people are, be allowed to grow those indoors, so it was simply an acknowledgement of their consistency with that state regulations. Or outdoors, which of course is something that isn't mandated by the state and is an action that the town would be taking on its own. Another aspect with respect to cultivation has to do with multifamily cultivation. As noted in prior staff reports, town staff did contact every large apartment or multifamily complex in the town. They were universally not in favor of allowing cultivation indoors, but that's a private matter between tenants and the landlord, and wouldn't strictly be the town's purview. In looking at outdoor growing, they simply came to the conclusion that, given the landlord's opposition to the cultivation of marijuana on their property, it would be just as easy to limit it to six total plants per property. So it's unlikely that this is going to come up as an issue, given the position of the landlords, as we said, we contacted all of them. Another aspect for cultivation, outdoor cultivation, has to do with the buffer setback, and what the town, the Planning Commission recommends is that they maintain any cultivator or property in which outdoor cultivation is occurring, maintain a 200-foot buffer from schools and daycare centers. In terms, another element that the Planning Commission looked at has to do with medical exemptions, and the commission recommended that if a doctor recommended, that the town manager would consider a patient or caregiver to be allowed to grow additional plants outdoors. It's noted that in the ordinance before you, it's still recommending a maximum of eighteen plants. For medical purposes, this is consistent with our existing regulations. And it's noted, as I said, that the Planning Commission is, had a different recommendation than what you see in the ordinance. The ordinance before you is, was basically continued unchanged from what the Planning Commission reviewed at their meeting. There are other elements of cultivation requirements in terms of screening, locking gates, et cetera, that I won't go into the details of. Those are contained in our existing outdoor cultivation regulations, and so they've been operating for some time and appear to be working just fine. Storefront locations and buffer zones. And again, this was one of the key topics that the Planning Commission really looked at carefully and had a variety of opinions, and ultimately didn't come up with a consensus on. But where they did agree was that they would only allow any storefront retail, whether medical or, excuse me, any storefront adult-use retail in the CH and CC zone, and they would allow delivery only in the CL zone. So that's limited commercial, and we'll get to the buffer maps.
Just one thing, when I was reading this, I think you, this refers to only in the CL zone, but I think you also mean delivery in CH and CC as well.
Yes.
I found that, it was just kind of confusing, so I just want to clarify that.
Yes, that's right. It would be, if it were an adjunct to any of the retail storefronts in the CH and CC zone, it would be allowed in that zone.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Thank you for the clarification. And then in terms of setbacks, the state right now has a default 600-foot setback from any business use, from any storefront retail to any school, daycare, or youth center. And as you can see in our ordinances, staff has crafted what those uses mean and do not mean. And the Planning Commission agreed to maintain the state's default 600-foot setback for any storefront retail to those three youth category uses. For retail delivery only in the event that a business simply is for retail delivery, however, the Planning Commission felt that a 600-foot setback buffer would be acceptable solely from a school. In other words, that they would not be required to maintain that 600-foot setback from either a daycare center or a youth center. Other elements that the Planning Commission looked at in their seven hearings has to do with onsite parking. What they concluded was that it would be acceptable to require parking the same as any other retail business. Just for example, with the proposed 1,500-square-foot cap on any cannabis retail business, they would be required to have five off-street parking spaces. It's noted also that in the proposed regulations, that the delivery-only aspect would have its own parking requirements of one parking space per two employees dedicated for delivery. Other elements of the regulations, and this isn't necessarily our cannabis regulations, but it follows into the cannabis business review process, which I'll discuss in a moment, is that design review is required if somebody is proposing a greater than 50% remodel of any commercial storefront, that the signage requirements are, would be consistent with the town regulations for retail stores, and it's staff's understanding that the Town Council may like a slightly more discreet and smaller signage than what our current regulations allow, but the Planning Commission said, consistent with our regulations for all retail uses. In terms of traffic, staff has noted this previously as a potentially significant issue, especially, for example, if there's an architect's office being converted to a cannabis business, there's a possibility that an adult-use storefront business may require a traffic impact permit. That's triggered if you create more than 100 daily trips more than the prior commercial use. And staff intends to be very careful about looking at any potential traffic impacts for future businesses. Another aspect of the review that was discussed by the Planning Commission would be that they would conduct initial review and recommend all aspects of any cannabis business, whether it's the specific cannabis proposal or associated applications such as signage, design review, traffic, to the council, Town Council for final decision. And here are the buffer zones. This, what you can see here in red are the youth centers and schools, that large red, for example, on the top of that picture is the St. Rita School site, and then we have other youth centers. What the result is, is the yellow area is CH zone and is the only area that would be potentially allowable for a cannabis business, and that basically runs from Pastore to, gosh, what's that other? Pacheco. Thank you, Garrett. So that's the location that would maintain the state's 600-foot setback buffer from any youth centers. This also points out that in a CL zone, there actually is, Deer Park Villa is a CL zone property. So potentially, that could be proposed for a delivery-only location. The Planning Commission didn't get into a discussion about that. And then this is a further example of the potential available commercial zone areas were there to be different buffers or reduced buffers, and the council were to direct that those businesses be located in the commercial zone areas. Staff and a majority of the Planning Commission supports a cannabis business permit process, and one of the primary reasons we are recommending that is this would continue to allow the ability to approve a business that is specific to that particular business and business operator. In other words, if somebody were to desire to sell the business, or if the business were to close, that business permit would expire. So this allows the town to take a close look at any proposed operator. It's not to say that somebody couldn't sell their business, it's just that they would have to go through the town's review process. So that's one of the benefits of this proposed process with the zoning regulations on one hand and a business permit process on the other. Another aspect of this is, has to do with the initial applications. Staff would be looking at a group, likely a group of applications. We would be providing a submittal deadline for completed applications to potential businesses, and then we would basically make a determination whether that application was complete and ready to- ready to be reviewed for conformance and completeness. The next step in that process would be for the Planning Commission to review those applications based on the criteria set forth. They would score each individual business application and rank accordingly. This is in the preliminary stages, but as proposed, there would be a total of a 100-point system, and that a business would have to achieve at least an 80-point score to qualify for recommendation of consideration by the Town Council. The Town Council would have the final review and decision-making authority on any business. And in the preliminary ranking system, the council would have 10 additional points to apply to their review process in reaching a final determination on who the successful applicants would be. And I use that term applicants, there may only be one business that's allowed, in which case there'd just be one, or none, as your council may decide. And finally, that once the successful applicants on this discretionary process are finalized by your council, staff would process the subsequent cannabis business permit. In terms of the existing medical dispensary, which has an adjunct or a proposed adjunct adult-use delivery business, it's noted that the existing medical dispensary use is grandfathered in at the business location, so that would continue to operate regardless of these new regulations. The adult-use recreation, recreational delivery business was approved by your council last December. The recommendation from the Planning Commission would be to continue to allow that business, that delivery business at that business location. However, there's a question for your council, and that has to do with, should the recreational delivery business be required to go through the new regulations if it has not achieved a permit prior to the inception of the new regulations? So in other words, your council took action last December, it's been more than four months, the town has still not received a business permit application from the applicant. We understand that they're in process at the state, but the question would be for your council, is do we consider that business location and the medical, or excuse me, and the delivery portion of that business to be effectively grandfathered, or would they have to be into this competitive process if they still haven't taken formal action with the town to get their business permit prior to inception of the new regulations? And then finally, and this is very preliminary, but just to provide your council with an overview, we are, we did present to the Planning Commission at their last meeting some preliminary scoring criteria. This is in order to rank different business applicants according to the town's own criteria. There are three main criteria to be proposed, to be used. The first is business qualifications and business plan. The second is the quality of their operating plan, and the third is the public benefits that the business provides. It's noted, and you have that sheet of the draft scoring review criteria, that there are numerous sub-criteria assigned under each main criteria. The Planning Commission had some initial comments. Staff is awaiting your council's direction on this process to go back to the Commission and continue that discussion, or depending on your council's comments, we're awaiting whatever direction you may provide. It's noted, as stated previously, that there is a proposed 100-point score for each applicant, and that the Town Council would have the final decision with additional points assigned to a business or not. And the Planning Commission is prepared to continue its review, depending on your action at tonight and at future meetings. Next steps, we, please provide direction to staff on these main policy issues outlined before you tonight, and staff is prepared to discuss the ordinance for consideration at future meetings.
Thank you, Ben. So are, do council members have questions of staff? Now, just a reminder, we want to go out to public comment as quickly as possible, so at this point, just hold yourself to questions. We'll have an opportunity to deliberate after we hear public comment. So Renee, would you like to go forward? Oh, I'm sorry, Ben.
I should have noted that we actually have two legal staff here who are intimately involved in every aspect of this deliberation and preparation process, so we have our team of experts here tonight.
Okay, so we have our town attorney, Janet Coulson, and our assistant town attorney, Amanda Charn. Is that the correct? Thank you very much for all your hard work on this, all of you, and Garrett Toy has done yeoman's work on this as well, so we will move on. And Renee, would you like to ask the first question?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. You mentioned the Planning Commission was considering numbers of plants for personal medical cultivation, and you said that it's 18 in our existing, but what were they recommending?
For medical cultivation, they recommended that there be no cap, per se. That what they wanted to see was what a doctor recommended for a particular patient's needs, and then there would be a submittal to the town manager to review things like neighborhood aspects, et cetera. But there was no cap, per se. The regulations as written cap it at 18, which is consistent with our current regulations.
I thought, just, I'm a little confused. I thought that they recommended that it be six indoors or outdoors, regardless if it's medical or adult use, but then they had this extra provision that if someone wanted to, needed to have more, that a doctor would send a recommendation which would go to the town manager. The old, the existing medical marijuana ordinance has the 18 plants, but I believe in this new one, and I'm sorry for interrupting, but I read that very carefully. So I see our attorneys nodding. Maybe you, Amanda, could you weigh in on that, just to clarify?
My understanding as well.
Yes, Mary, you're correct. The regulations have been, the proposed regulations have been drafted to be consistent with the plant limits under Prop 64, which would allow six plants indoors and six, or six plants either indoors or outdoors, whether for personal adult use or personal medical use. And then medical patients could, upon a doctor's recommendation, ask for an administrative exception from the town manager. And then I think there was discussion by the Planning Commission regarding whether the administrative exception could approve up to 18 plants, or whether it should be unlimited, and I think maybe that's what Director Berto is referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this is a topic that the Commission deliberated on at length, and frankly, they didn't reach a clear consensus, but they seemed to recommend no set cap, per se.
Okay, let's, let's go back.
On medical.
Six indoor or outdoor, medical or adult use, and then if a medical patient needed more, that a doctor would send in a recommendation. That's what I read in all the materials. So let's not confuse it saying no cap, because right now they said six indoor/outdoor, medical or adult use, doesn't matter which. And you may be getting confused with our existing medical marijuana ordinance. And our town attorney just clarified that.
But you're talking about the cap on the exemption.
Correct.
On the exception.
On the exemption.
So they're not recommending a cap on the, on the exception.
Okay.
Okay, but we can talk about that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so other questions?
Just a couple more questions, if I may. So you talked about the traffic impact study. So how would we do that prior to having an establishment? How would we know and what would trigger our thinking that it would be more than 100 trips a day or less?
Staff would likely err on the side of caution in terms of traffic generation insofar as this would be, if a decision were made to allow an adult-use storefront, it would be the first one in the county, and likely there would be substantial traffic. And it's sort of a gray area in terms of a determination. With typical retail businesses, we let somebody make, get a traffic consultant and basically make their argument. So we would probably allow an applicant to do that, but again, this is an element that we would want to be very careful in consideration of. Frankly, in our discussion of the business license aspect, it refers to a traffic study, so any way you look at it, they're likely going to have to do a traffic study. I did neglect to tell your council, typically under a traffic impact permit, the methodology goes to the Town Council first. However, because of the process that's proposed in these regulations, it would add months to the review process if the methodology for the traffic permit had to go to your council, get approval, then come back down for review by the Planning Commission with the cannabis business application and any other discretionary planning permit, and then finally go back up to your Town Council for a final decision. So in these regulations, what's being proposed is that that traffic impact process would simply go to the Planning Commission with the other applications.
Okay, final question is, in our, in our current medical dispensary ordinance, we allow a max of three, correct? So in what we're going to talk about tonight, how does that, how does that work? Are we looking to create a regulatory and a number which subsumes that existing medical dispensary number?
Yes, the draft regulations that you have before you tonight would assign a number that would include total medical dispensaries and any other type of business. So for example, if you were to reach a decision on one, that would be occupied by the existing business.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Okay, other questions of staff?
If I may. To clarify, as far as our current regulations on cultivating medical marijuana, isn't it a maximum of 18 if you are a caregiver for up to three people per parcel? Otherwise, it's six per medical patient? That was my understanding of what our current regulations allow.
Yeah, it's certainly my recollection also.
A question about the scoring criteria for the business permits. Would that apply for delivery or retail? That anyone would have to go through that scoring and evaluation process, whether it's retail or delivery?
Yes, regarding the application and review, any commercial cannabis business proposing to go forward at, upon inception of the regulations would have to be subject to that.
Okay, thanks.
And in terms of the number, we're looking at that.
Yeah, she's going to confirm it, but you're right, it's 18, but if you can get an exception with the doctor's note, then it's that number of plants within 100 square feet. That's how the current medical cultivation ordinance, but this would be all replaced.
Other questions of staff, John?
Yeah, I guess, am I taking, beyond your presentation here, I'm looking at the draft regulations also. But in your presentation, you referred to, you inquired the different, multiple, you know, basically apartment buildings around town that you talked to in terms of, you know, what their laws are, or their general rules are, for people growing indoors. And I think you extrapolated from that, that you didn't ask them about outdoors, right? You just assumed that they would have the same.
What they indicated to us was that they would not support marijuana cultivation, period.
Period, indoors or outdoors, okay. That was a little unclear.
And I would refer the specific legal question. My understanding is that they are allowed to control things like cultivation in their business, in their units.
Well, certainly, certainly, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I wonder about lumping all multiple unit, you know, like a duplex or a triplex could be the same sort of situation, and we should probably be clear about that as a matter of policy going forward, but, you know, I think to treat duplexes and triplexes the same as a, as an apartment building, we should probably carve that out a little bit. And also, looking at your draft regulations, I guess on page two of Attachment A is Paragraph M, is, you talk about a fully enclosed and secure structure, and I can see the reasons for that. But it appears that, you know, it talks about two-by-four construction, you know, bolted down to a concrete slab with, you know, half-inch plywood, I think it is some kind of plywood. Anyway, that would seem to eliminate any kind of greenhouse, kind of, was that your intention to eliminate greenhouses? Because I should think.
I don't know if we got into the nuts and bolts, but maybe they just have to do a heavy-duty greenhouse if they're.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking with, you know, alarm kind of thing, because that's very energy-intensive to have, you know, a fully enclosed building that's outside, and it seems like a greenhouse. It's something that could be secured and, you know, out of the public view in some situations. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Bruce, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I wanted to thank staff and legal counsel and the Planning Commission for enormous amount of consideration of this, but also to just reiterate and confirm that there were a number of issues the Planning Commission did not have consensus on, and that there was a pretty wide range of opinions on them. So we really have decisions to look at tonight. Just one small thing, and then that's it for me for questions, is just to clarify, and I've already gotten this clarified for myself, but I just want to clarify it in public, that CBD products are completely not part of this discussion at all. CBD products, per se, that are CBD-only are not under the MACRUSA.
I think it's CBD from hemp. That, there's a distinction, there's CBD from hemp and there's CBD from cannabis, correct?
No, it's actually CBD from, they're all cannabis, but CBD from hemp is exempt, and CBD from marijuana is not.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. No, that's great. I just have a quick ques, Bruce, were you done? Just a quick question, thank you for reaching out to multifamily. I'm wondering, since multifamily also includes homeowners associations, and I think there might be two, there may be more, in Fairfax, which is a little different than an apartment. I'm not sure that it makes a huge difference, but I wonder, were you able to reach out to them? Because you would have to reach out to their property managers.
No, we were simply looking at apartment complexes.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, but they are a little different, and to a certain extent, they're more like, even though they're attached, they're more like individual homes, so it may be a little different. But I don't think for purposes of this discussion tonight, it's a little bit of splitting hairs, but just probably to think of something for the future. Okay, so I'm going to open it up for public comment, but for, by a show of hands, I'd like to see how many people want to speak on this item. Okay, quite a number of folks. So I'm going to exercise my discretion again, and we'll be looking at two minutes for individuals, and four minutes for somebody representing an entire group. So only one person from that group gets the four minutes, but the rest of folks from those groups can speak for the two. So we'll go ahead and get started, and thank you all for attending. And sir, would you like to speak first? I think, you know, I just want to mention, we used to have some hearing devices, which, I didn't want to interrupt, would you like one of those devices?
I think good so far.
Okay, great. So you need to press the button. So you need to press the button.
Push the button on the thing.
Okay, yeah. I was hearing almost everything that was there, but there was, it was such a complex list of things that I would think that I'd need two days to mull it over if I saw it on bunches of paper. So rather than try to approach it from the standpoint where they're at, I have to give, my background is saying that I'm, my lifetime reputation is that of the consummate iconic last. And so I think, I'm just interested in the aspect of freedoms in general, and if I can open a little bit of a picture of that, I have a, many people have an international hero by the name of Sir Richard Branson, and he's on the Global Commission. hero by the name of Sir Richard Branson, and he's on the Global Commission on Drug Policy. And he made all drugs legal in Portugal. And having done that, they have the least problems of any country on the planet, while we have gone through 50 years of drug war, all the way from Tommy Guns to mass incarceration, making us the most embarrassing incarcerated planet on the whole planet, this country. And then I hear people talking about, you know, the red, white, and blue being used as a manipulative tool, and so many other things that have broken down our previous perspectives. And so what I would like to see is just more legal options, and I think that that could buffer some of what is being discussed there. And also, I've been two to three years now doing research on a book that I'll be producing with other books on other subjects, and I find that I've learned a lot more about what I thought I knew. And personally, I don't use anything at all. I mean, I'm the total opposite. I'm what you might call a health nut to the extreme. And so every bite of food I take, every type of thing I mix, I find that I'm really on my way towards being a naturopathic doctor. But other than that, to get back to the subject, just to have things legal, just to.
So can we wrap it up? You're over your time. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming. So if you feel comfortable doing so, state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Wellish, and I am a Marin resident. And I was diagnosed three years ago with early onset Alzheimer's at 57, and as there is no cure, and the guess is it's inflammation of the brain for this disease, I've had numerous neurologists tell me that the most important thing is to not be stressed, which is pretty hilarious, like, get diagnosed, but don't be stressed. So anyways, so I take a myriad of drugs, of which none of them really do anything for anything, and because there's no cure or anything else. And I don't like being full of pharmaceuticals, and they all have side effects. And as long as I can think and continue to fight on, it's nice to be able to have something that can keep me calm, that doesn't have a side effect, that doesn't make me sick in another way, or dry my eyes out, or whatever. So I would like to say that through a lot of research, I've found that different cannabinoids help tremendously. And I'm an advocate, and I'm an advocate because there's so many people. I've found that it helps in so many medical ways, you know, for cancer. We all know somebody who's had cancer and used it so they could eat and not throw up. And is time up? I would just say one sentence.
You've got time.
Okay.
Not much.
I can't drive much longer, and I go to Santa Rosa, I go to the East Bay, I go to San Francisco. The one that's here, the dispensary, is horrible. I would say, please put it through the process for application. It's worthless. I would love to see somebody in who is professional and mature and responsible, and it's like weird in there. I would never go in there again. I don't think it represents what you want to have here. And one other quick one, I would just say that I appeal to you for either a second dispensary or put that one through the application process.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So just, I know everyone, I think everyone appreciates the feedback, but it would be best if we just could move it along. And, you know, sometimes if people don't get clapping, they may feel bad. So let's just dispense with clapping, or just move on. Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for saving Fairfax, and let's try to keep it going. Okay, so I'm Chelsea, I live in San Geronimo, I have been a community member since 1976. I'm a mother-friendly local hairstylist in Fairfax, California since 2004. My other passions include, my other passionate works include music promotion, event specialist. I also work part-time with an autistic 10-year-old boy. My business partner Kathy and I have submitted an application to the Fairfax Town Council to open a new medical cannabis facility in town, in the buffer zone. We have listened to much of the public's concerns. We feel that we have excellent solutions to address most all of these you have voiced at the past meetings. Our mission is grounded in desire to operate an improved business model, protecting the best interests of our children, as well as offering a gentle, effective approach to harm reduction in our community. Excuse me. Our plan addresses the needs for parent education, teen education, and as a nonprofit, we have allocated funds for these campaigns to help educate and provide safety to the community. How do we do this? We track all of our procurement and sales of cannabis products to our membership. We know who is buying products, our products. We track their usage through industry standards and HEPA-compliant software. As parents, we are dedicated to keeping our facility and our products out of the hands of minors. I grew up in this town, I raised my son here, I spend much of my time in our open space. We are also blessed to live here together. Let's communicate with love and understanding for opposing views. I am also a parent, and just like you, we all love our children. As parents, we welcome other concerned parents to sit at our roundtable to openly discuss how to address these concerns and come up with the solutions that best worked for our community together. It's our plan to work with experts to offer the much-needed education for our community with regards to both the new health benefits the medicine is providing to help with serious medical conditions.
Thank you.
How great would it be if we all opened our hearts to true harm reduction within our community? We can, I'm speaking for a group, for the Sleeping Lady Cannabis community, so if I could just have a couple more minutes, that would be awesome.
I'm not sure about that group. Can you wrap it up?
We can replace most over-prescribed unnecessary pharmaceuticals and reduce the number of deaths from opioids, alcohol, and drugs. There is now a healthy alternative to Xanax, opioid, Adderall, Lorazepam, and the side effects are better overall health. Can you open your heart and mind if it means saving lives? Cannabis is a positive medicine that promotes physical, mental, spiritual, and social wellness. It's a win-win now. Cannabis is being used in rehabilitation centers effectively. Full plant medicine is good stuff. I suffer from severe fibromyalgia, PTSD, and adult ADHD. I do not use pharmaceuticals, alcohol, or any other drugs or tobacco products. I treat my pain and anxiety with a combination of CBD and THC. They work best together, not isolated. Isolated CBDs are not regulated. I'm not going to get into all that, because I don't have time.
So why don't we wrap it up?
Although there's an existing medical dispensary, thank you, Lynette Shaw, for planting these roots for this movement to grow. Hats off. Unanimously, I'm finding our community desperately needs another, one that is fully stocked with the variety of fresh, excellent medicine. Marin County has more medical cards issued than any other Northern California county, but our access is not really there. We are far behind in our education as well. Our residents drive over bridges to get medicine for sick family members and recreational use. Our own elderly homes are contracting out of county for medicine.
Thank you. Thank you. You'll have to end now. Thank you.
With love, hopefully we can keep this within our community to ensure the safety and product of our kids, and by regulating the flow of cannabis with care, these delivery services are a huge help.
You'll have to stop. Thank you. Hello.
Hi.
If you feel comfortable doing so, state your name and address.
Sure. My name's Deb Nelson, 37th Street Road, Fairfax. I've lived in Fairfax about 30 years. I've raised two kids here. I wanted to speak on three main elements regarding the plan. The first is the buffer. I wanted to state my support for maintaining the 600-foot buffer zone, and I'd like to put a request that we include the ball field. I've been to many of these meetings regarding the cannabis issues and also the planning commission meetings, and there have been many, many people from the West Marin Youth Baseball Program who would really like to see the buffer zone maintained there. The second thing I'd like to request is that we have one storefront and not three. There was an article in The Chronicle on April 13th, and within that article, it stated that two-thirds of California's local municipalities have banned dispensaries and other cannabis-related deliveries. Fairfax will be the only town in Marin with a storefront for recreational cannabis. And the San Francisco Public Health Department has recommended that San Francisco allow one dispensary per 15,000 people. If we were to follow this guideline, we'd have half a dispensary. The concern I also have regarding more than one dispensary is the town's readiness for the expected increase in DUIs and medical emergencies. Our vote on Prop 64 in support of this was primarily regarding decriminalization and regulation. It wasn't an open path for multiple storefronts. I don't know that the town has anything to gain by opening more than one storefront. It seems the prudent and most smart thing to do is to have one storefront and assess the impact in terms of our police force, fire department, our community, and our traffic.
Thank you.
I have one second. I'd also like to have a regulation on potency.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, let's just kind of move along. Thank you. Hi, if you feel comfortable doing so, state your name and address.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Patrick Fasano, and I own Focus Opticians in San Anselmo, your neighbor town. I've been to many, many town council meetings, and I got to tell you, I've never seen a town council so complimented in my entire life. You guys must be flying. But I'm here to.
That was the first time ever.
Was it? Okay. Well, that's good. I'm here to just remind you that when we're talking about cannabis, it's a very polarizing subject here. But keep in mind that when people want to bring something like this to your community, it's not a matter of them being a villain, or wanting to come and destroy your youth, or make the town like Pottersville. They want to help the town. They want to bring revenue to the town. They want to make it better. They want to make it safe. If you really want to protect your children, then you really need to take this seven-headed hydra, this monster that everybody thinks this peaceful plant is, and regulate it, legalize it. It was passed Prop 64, three out of four people in Marin County, and we still can't access it? It's called Adult Use of Marin, pardon me, Adult Use of Marijuana Act, AUMA, okay? Why can't we have that now, if three out of four people voted for that? You can go into Safeway and look at all of the liquor that's there. If a kid picks up a bottle and runs, they won't even chase them. When you get to a medical dispensary, or even a recreational dispensary, that child can't even get near it, can't get in it. When they go into a dispensary, there's nothing on a shelf that they can pull off. It's probably the safest way to approach this. When I moved to Marin 34 years ago, I moved to Fairfax, because it had the reputation for being a bastion of forward liberal thought. In 1996, Marin Alliance for Medical Marijuana opened, and that made you guys look like you were the most progressive, wonderful, fabulous, thought-progressive people in the country. It was the first in the country. Granted, what's going on there now is not in compliance with the regulations now, but when someone comes to you and wants to do this, they want to help you and be a friend to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
If you want to state your name and address, if you feel comfortable doing so.
Yes. My name's Jasmine Garrity. A lot of you know me, because I gave you a presentation last week about tobacco policy and things that are going on related to tobacco. So today, I'm here to talk briefly about kind of the things that I'm concerned about and the things that are happening, especially with the marijuana industry. So at public meetings, I often hear people point to regulations imposed on cannabis businesses to prevent the sales of people, to people under 21, as an argument to allow storefronts. I don't doubt that most business owners and people who are here today to have a business, they wouldn't, they'd follow those laws and regulations that are in place, both at the state and local level, including not selling to anyone who's underage. The concern that I have is not about the retail owners, it's about the cannabis products that are going to be sold in these outlets. Retail outlets are an extension of big cannabis, and high THC retail products lead directly back to the cannabis industry. I'm going to tell you a little bit of a story. In 2004, there was the genesis of a big company. Two Stanford graduates started to develop an e-cigarette prototype out of foam. They ultimately forced an e-cigarette company, or they created, formed an e-cigarette company called Plume. Plume made a product that was acquired by the Japan Tobacco International Company in 2015. The two bought back their stake in Plume and renamed this company Pax Labs, which the Juul e-cigarette shot and spun off of this company and became independent. Pax Labs' popular cannabis vaporizer looks identical to this e-cigarette Juul. Last week, Pax Labs boasted that the company made over $420 million on 4/20 last week. Since its creation in 2016, the slimmer Pax era device has sold over 500,000 devices internationally.
We need to end.
And I'm going to wrap it up, so thank you so much. I'm going to pass it back to Julia, who will.
Thank you. And please, no yelling from the audience. Thank you.
Yes, right here. Okay.
If you feel comfortable doing so, state your name and address.
My name is Julia Rose, and going off of what Jazzy said, the vape pod system for cannabis oil extract, this product that was marketed to youth, is popular with the youth and would likely be sold in these cannabis retail outlets. The alcohol industry is also looking to cash in on steak with the big cannabis. Constellation Brands and the owners Corona and many other beverages have interest in heavily in the cannabis market. Edible cannabis products also have gained popularity with corporate backing, and we see lollipops, gummies, and dessert infused with cannabis, up to 100 milligrams per package. This is a new era cannabis, faintly looks like to be high iconic green leaf that is used in most marketing. It looks more like a crystal or wax, and it reaches up to 95% THC potency. Opening the door for these products to enter our community is like opening Pandora's Fox. It is imperative to consider the impact of the products that will be constantly evolving with the upcoming years. Researchers in these products are only studying up to 15% TH potency, so we don't know the long-term health implications for using these high potency products. So please prioritize the well-being of our youth people like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Sebastian Meyer. I live in Mill Valley. I come here every once in a while to advocate for youth who have had similar experiences as myself in substance abuse in Marin. And I can tell you right now that allowing for a retail storefront in Fairfax is a terrible idea if you care about the perception of harm marijuana has among the youth of Marin. If you allow a storefront, another storefront to be opened, it is basically telling the citizens as a whole that it is an accepted product, that it is okay. The perception of harm is already at an all-time low, while the potency of cannabis is rising with an increasing, in an increasing percentage rate. They will be selling the same products that every other dispensary and every other recreational club does, which is largely products aimed at the youth, designed to create the same 80/20 ratio of problem users that consume, 20% of the problem users consuming 80% of the product. And I would really hate to see that happen where I live, while there are several programs that are being started up to help stem the flow of drug-addicted youth in this county that I really care about. And I don't want to see people saying that it's legal and that it's safe and that there's a store in Fairfax that they can get their older brother to go buy them drugs at. I don't agree with it, and I don't think anyone that truly cares about the mental health of the kids in Marin who have been smoking weed and who are potentially going to become exposed to cannabis in the coming years could support that decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Fiona Core, and I'm a student at Drake High School. I live on Willow Way on the border of San Anselmo and Fairfax. Ever since I was a little girl, I have loved Fairfax. It has many interesting features and unique people. I've always admired the kindness and the community values that the people of Fairfax hold true. I want you to consider the changes this decision will not only hold to me and my peers, but to our community as a whole. On the weekends, at almost any teen's social gathering, anyone can see the excessive use of alcohol and marijuana. It is very scary and saddening to see this now, and the increasing availability by adding storefronts in Fairfax, this current use will only go up. In the Marin Healthy Kids Survey, it was released that over 50% of 11th graders had smoked marijuana once or more times in their life. This is over half of 11th graders, and might I remind you that teens tend to under-report their use? Also, this does not include other uses of marijuana. Now, I can see how people may think teens will do drugs no matter what. There is no way to stop them. But there is a way to prevent the amount of teens who use marijuana products. But there is a way to prevent the amount of teens who use marijuana products. As I just learned in my economics class, if you raise the supply, the demand will soon follow. The more availability, the more use among teens. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patrice Bryan, Fairfax-registered voter. Oh, sorry about that. I'm just disillusioned by the children who are speaking today and wondering about the parenting. I am a cannabis user. I do it because I was an Olympic development soccer player. I have no cartilage in my knees. I do it because I don't use opioids. I don't want drug addiction, and my parents told me that it was a safer alternative, as did my doctors, as does everyone today. I still don't use opioids. I use cannabis to prevent pain, and you know what? I started doing this before there was medicinal cannabis. So we talk about adult use, we talk about recreational, we talk about medicinal. It's all the same thing. We're using cannabis to help our bodies. It's a plant. It's the only plant in the world that's illegal? I don't understand. So coming to Fairfax in July from San Francisco, I'm just disillusioned. I mean, most counties in the state right now are expunging records of people who have cannabis crimes, and we're still debating whether or not we're going to have competition. Competition eliminates monopolies. Right now, we have a cannabis monopoly, and to the woman who spoke earlier, we don't have a great monopoly. There's no quality in that dispensary. People are driving 45 minutes, including myself, to get quality product. And so all I want to say is, please look at state law, please look at real research, and understand that this is a plant that is beneficial for people, whether or not it's medicinal or for calming yourself down at the end of the night. I mean, it's a plant.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Mike Zaleski, and we are at 1613 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. We run a tutoring center at 1613 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. We have lots of teenagers, we have all the way down to six-year-olds, and on the map that I saw of your buffer zone, I did not see our center. Now, I saw that you said youth centers and schools, and if any of you, and I know Renee knows us, if any of you want to sit in our building and watch for a day, you will see many, many teenagers come in. So there's two buildings that have been for sale on our block, and I have heard a lot that there's potential marijuana dispensaries, and they would be opening almost next door to us or one over. So I really want to ask the town council, please, bring that 600-foot buffer zone to our tutoring center. We've been in business in Fairfax since 1995, always paid our taxes. We've been there a long time, and we really don't want a dispensary on our block, on that 1600 block of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. There are also apartments and families on both sides of us. There is a family block. So when I looked at your buffer zone, we are zoned commercial highway, but I really want to make sure that that block of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard should not be considered. It's 600 feet, we'll go all the way from Mauro's Pasta to Pancho Villa's from our place, so please, consider that. I really want you to really think about that. And then, as far as dispensaries go, you know, do we need more than one? I don't know. We do have a smaller amount of people, so if you want to put in three for a small amount of people, that seems overkill, and I think you're going to get people coming from all over the place, so I'm just not sure that's a good idea. Please think it through carefully. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Again, it would be a good idea not to applaud because there are some people who aren't getting applause, they're going to feel bad, and we also want to hear people's comments. So, and if we can lower the comments in the room, thank you. Come on up, please. And if you feel comfortable doing so, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Ford Longard. I go to White Hill Middle School. I live in San Anselmo. And I see firsthand what pot does and marijuana does to kids in my grade and kids at my school. And I think having another store will just open up the possibility for more kids to have pot and more kids to get addicted and lead on to harder drugs. So I really don't think another pot store is the best idea because of the amount of kids who are already using illegally. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi there, if you feel comfortable doing so, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Annie Lowengard, and I live at 72 Fernwood Drive. I'm here as a parent of a middle-schooler, White Hill Middle-schooler, and also a Drake senior. And I just want to explain what's happening in the-- from the parent's point of view. First of all, I do want to say that I absolutely recognize the benefits of cannabis. My dad was-- had never used drugs in his life and was so sick during his cancer treatment that the only thing that gave him relief was medical marijuana, so I understand that. My heart goes out to people who need it on a regular basis. I'm glad that it's available to them. I'm also very glad that we have delivery services so those needs can be met. But what I see is a huge problem here in this wonderful area that we call home. I especially see it with my seniors' friends. The kids who are using drugs are demotivated and are not living up to their potential. I see the kids who are using, smoking weed as like just kind of barely getting through life, and it started when they were in middle school. And it makes me really sad. And so I am here as a parent to ask that we don't put something in front of them that will make it feel that much more accessible and that much more normalized. I also am really saddened by that woman who was killed on Butterfield. And obviously, if we employ common sense, we know that if we're providing drugs in a more accessible fashion, that we're going to be having more DUIs and then more of those types of deaths. So I don't see us having anything to gain, just in terms of the revenue and the additional benefit to the town. I just don't see it being there. I again want to stress the fact that I understand that there are people who need the drug, and I would be, and I'm very much in support of them getting it, but we already have that taken care of.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bridget Clark, and I, first of all, wanted to second the message about TLC and including that in the buffer zone, please. A lot of teens from our area work there, including mine. So one thing I wanted to ask, how many people are here opposed to additional storefronts or storefronts? I'm just wondering. Could you raise your hand, just to get a sense?
So Bridget, you're supposed to speak--
Am I allowed to do that? Oh, I'm sorry.
You're supposed to speak to the council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I apologize.
That was fine, but you're supposed to address the council.
Okay, I was just curious, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. So I had written a letter in to try and invite you to an educational event that MCOE and Human Health Services did last week about cannabis and drugs, and I went. And just want to reiterate that this is a book that a local author wrote. It's educational, really recommend this as well. And I've been speaking to David Scheff, who is the one who-- whose son was portrayed in Beautiful Boy. And one of the things that was compelling was the fact that he said on page 107 that of all of the drugs that he tried, the hardest drug to quit was marijuana. So I just, I want it, or cannabis, whatever is the appropriate use, I'm not sure. So I just wanted to bring it up. I'm really working on a community read with others in the community and the libraries to try and promote this book and to have an event in the fall, and I hope that you can come and that others will support this, because we do need more education, and I appreciate everything you're doing, and I'm sorry that I messed up with--
No, no problem, Bridget. Thank you very much.
Hello, Town Council. My name is Monica Hulley. I live in Fairfax. I've been in Fairfax, San Anselmo, for about 14 years. I live behind St. Rita's right now, and earlier on, I heard someone thanking you for-- or giving credit to the Fairfax Police Department for saving a raccoon. And I just want to say, last week, there was a 26-year-old man in the St. Rita parking lot who had hitchhiked from Mount Tam, was dropped off there, and was in psychosis mode, and I can recognize this. And I actually asked him what was going on, and I gave him the time of day, and he told me what was going on. I called the Fairfax PD. They gave him a courtesy ride to the crisis unit. I followed. He signed a release and exchange. I'm his advocate now, and he was messed up on high potency THC, okay? My son Gabriel Hulley died by suicide in December 2017. It was not part of any drug use or cannabis. Since then, I've been on the Mental Health Service Act Advisory Committee. I'm in touch with Dr. Matt Willis, Dr. J. Africa. I'm in touch with the Community Coalition here, and I will tell you that this high potency THC is going to cause health risks, more dangers to the mental health and the suicidality of our youth in Marin County. It's a fact. So please, in your discussion, when you're talking about laws and policy and regulations and businesses, can you please consult with our mental health professionals and the National Institute of Health, which I've all referenced in my letters to you? Mr. Berto, your knowledge is beyond me. I thank you so much for all that information. I could not even follow it, but I really thank you for all the information, and I really thank you for all the time and attention, but please don't leave out the big epidemic of mental health and suicide in our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you speak, Ben or Garrett, do you think we could post the presentation on the website? It would be helpful. It was a great presentation, and if there's a way to post it. I think a lot of folks would like to look through it, so again, all right, David, I believe?
Hi there, thank you. Good evening. I'm David Finan, 18-year public school teacher and principal here in San Anselmo and Fairfax. Currently have the best job in the world at Bayside MLK in Marin City. And I have to say, while I appreciate the dialogue as part of this democratic process here in Fairfax, it's really a bit of a head-scratcher to me at this point. We have a longtime dedicated proponent of medical marijuana in the community. She blazed a trail to make medical marijuana available to those in Fairfax and elsewhere. She's been a true warrior in this regard. We also have other members of the community that would like to offer medical marijuana in town. We have legal, discreet delivery of recreational marijuana readily available to people in Fairfax. People are now accessing marijuana through delivery. Both medical marijuana and recreational marijuana are easily accessible for Fairfax residents. If you need it and/or you want it, you can get it. We also have some of the highest, if not the highest, youth alcohol and drug abuse stats in Marin County, right here at our very own Sir Francis Drake High School. Do we need to further encourage our youth and/or minimize the damaging effects of youth use and abuse? If we can meet all of the community's needs while supporting a healthy message for our kids, it seems like everyone wins. I encourage you to fully support Lynette's work, fully support discreet delivery, and refrain from allowing recreational marijuana shops in Fairfax. Fairfax does not need the traffic, does not need the potential impact of more impaired drivers, does not need any potential medical fallout, nor does it need the mixed message for our children, our community's most important asset. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Sarah Salin, I pretty much agree with everything David said. How do we have actual education and honesty across the board without being hypocrites about our children, basically? They see what we do regardless of what we say, regardless of what we say we're doing. The kids see it, and they do it. Kids know where to get the drugs, they're going to find the drugs, and we all have to get through that. We all hit that plateau. We all have a certain rite of passage. We all grow up, if we make it that far. But we all have to hit that line and choose for ourselves and our own nervous systems and our own bodies or whatever reactions, whether we're potaholics, alcoholics, or whether we're just-- we use it for life or whatever a little bit at a time. It's like we all have that edge, and how we get through that, whether we just stay away from it forever, I don't know. How do we keep our kids away from it till they get to the point where they can choose and make that choice for themselves? I'm not sure. Pot today isn't what it used to be, with the percentages and what it does to brain chemistry. Got a bunch in here. You know, we can grow it now, we can have delivery. I don't know that we need another storefront. I don't know that we need the traffic. I don't know that we need the exposure. We have access to it. There's a lot of benefits to pot. There's a lot of potential pitfalls to it as well. I think there's probably more benefits to marijuana than there are to pharmaceuticals that you see ads for on TV with lists of all the things. Your head's going to explode, you're going to die if you take this, but hey, get your doctor to give it to you.
Sarah, thank you.
Okay, anyway.
Thank you for your comments.
Lou Tremaine, 1790, Sir Francis Drake, Fairfax, representing the Marin Alliance and its 4,700 members. I don't even know where to begin, frankly. It's great. I mean, there's so much information that you guys have to digest, and I want to start out by thanking the planning commission. I want to start out by thanking staff. I want to start out by thanking you, because this is a huge undertaking. We are not in accord on what we think should happen with the cannabis industry here in town, and we've had that conversation publicly and privately. It is my belief that Fairfax has a traditional cannabis industry that has been going on since the '70s. With the advent of Prop 215, much of that was legalized because of collective law. One of the unintentional and unfortunate Prop 64 outcomes was that those people lost their jobs, and the medical side of the industry suffered. It was hard to sit here and listen to people criticize what we're going through up at Marin Alliance. I suggest they come back. We're rebounding. We have compliant, excellent product right now. But to the issues that you are grappling with, I think that signage is a huge issue, and I think that you should apply the same restrictions that you apply to us. I think that a medical or adult-use marijuana facility should be discreet.
So Lou, I'm not sure that you're representing all the members of the Marin Medical Alliance. Are you-- I'm not sure that you're speaking on behalf of a group, so I think you need to wrap up.
Okay, I disagree with you 100%, but that's fine.
How about one more minute?
I also think that as you consider whether or not to allow recreational or adult use, I think that you should require that it be a second-floor facility. It should be out of sight. One of the things that has been successful about us is that we have been invisible except for those who need us and those who want us, and I think that you all should maintain that requirement. This doesn't have to be a screaming advertisement for marijuana if it's done discreetly, and adult use can be done discreetly, just as medical has been all these years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Mark?
Mark Bell Domingo. I don't even use this stuff. However, it was legalized. One thing to keep in mind, there are, I think, 25 states now who have legal marijuana, and most of them have dispensed-- most of them have dispensaries marked usually with a green cross, like in Oregon, and I think also in Washington State. You can't get in the door unless you show ID that you're 21. Some places even make you register so that they have a database so they can keep track of who's there, who's using what. It seems to me that if we have children who are having alcohol and drug problems at Drake, maybe it's the parents who need the education. I mean, how many people from Drake are going to Marin Alliance and getting drugs? I would say probably none. If you have a storefront that doesn't allow anyone under 21 inside, then how is that an issue? How is that adding to what's happening with teenagers? I don't see it. So I, you know, I'm glad that, you know, there's been, you know, an outpouring of youth involved in a political process, but there's 25 states, and I don't see any of those states going back. I don't see the state of Oregon, the state of Colorado, the state of Washington deciding to repeal what they have. So obviously, the long-term effects, and these places have had these laws in effect much longer than California, obviously, it's not this end-of-the-world scenario that's being presented. And I think if anybody is having an educational issue, it's the adults of children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening.
Good evening. Charlie Hickox, 69, Manor Road, Fairfax, father of two Dracians graduates, one alternative human from San Andreas. I got eight grandkids, two live up the hill on Tamil Pius to come over frequently to our house on Manor. One thing is, I wish I hadn't had the drug I had earlier that's stronger than marijuana, cappuccino at 4:00, but anyway, so be it. Here's the thing. I don't really, when I turn 80 in nine years, I would like to be able to smoke some pot, come back and play my piano, and meditate. I believe in meditative marijuana. But I really don't want to have somebody come by the house where I might have the grandkids over delivering pot that I don't know, you know, and I don't know what they're bringing in, and they're in my house, and they're stopping in front like an old-fashioned drug deal. I think I should be able to go, as Lou says, to a place that nobody knows is there, basically. Go in, buy some pot, be 21, show my ID, see if you sell. They don't even let you smoke it in there. You can't. You just have to look at it, take it home, keep it away from my grandkids, obviously, and be able to smoke it. And, you know, I don't need it medicinally. I just might want to start smoking again after, you know, 25 years or 30 years or whatever it was. And that's my feeling on that. I'm a terrible driver. I don't think I should go to somebody else's neighborhood where their kids live to buy pot. Do I go to a poorer area where the people don't have advocates because their kids, you know, they don't have the resources to stand up against their neighborhood and keep pot out, you know? And that just doesn't seem right. I understand. Believe me, I don't want kids, you know, like everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, one other thing. I don't think we should be prosecuting and citing kids for possession. I want to make sure they don't enter the legal system when they're found with drugs that they aren't dealing.
Thank you.
If they're getting, you know, high, everybody's going to do it. We all did it.
Thank you.
It's human nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Roger Marston, Porteous Avenue. And I want to make three quick points. One is discretion has been mentioned, and I don't need to go any further, but just to reinforce the importance of discretion and the possibilities of discretion. Another thing that I want to say is this, as someone else said, this is a very polarizing topic and a very emotional topic. And what tends to happen with emotional, polarizing subjects is that people come in often on both sides of it and speak very authoritatively, but it almost sounds as if it's research-based, but it's not. And we just need to be careful about that. And the last thing that I want to say, it's more of a question, I guess, I've been to some of the dispensaries in Oakland and San Francisco, and they hit me completely differently than Sebastopol. And one thing I notice about Sebastopol is there's a lot of attention on the quality of the product, and quality not meaning levels of THC or how many versions of cookies and gummy bears, but organic, locally produced, that there's a lot of emphasis on that, kind of like what we expect from our produce in good earth. And I just wonder if that, if those kinds of issues are even part of the assessment process in looking at proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. So did anyone else, Michael?
Thank you, counsel. Outside of my own personal opinions on the subject, I do think that one thing you might want to back up and look at your ordinance, I think the town will assume some liabilities if you don't have a way to regulate what is and isn't grown, what is and isn't consumed, when you're in a common wall building such as multiple units. So if one party wants something and one party doesn't want something, your regulations need to be real clear, because the town's going to assume that liability, because as a landlord, I know certain exemptions for my insurance can occur, and I don't want that to occur. And so that's how I look at these things. So if you just bulldoze this through, you're going to find that there's certain things that are not indemnified by different policies for different actions and different ways that we do things, because there's other rights for both parties involved. So you might want to limit this or separate this to a single-family residence or to a commercial application, but not when you have multiple families where one does and one does not want something. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelsey.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Town Council members. My name is Kelsey Fernandez, and it's good to see you all. And I just want to echo all those compliments that you got earlier tonight. Super grateful for all the work that you guys do for this community, and thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this decision about cannabis regulations in Fairfax. I know that you have heard from a number of Fairfax residents this week, as well as residents from the surrounding communities who will be impacted by the decisions that are made here. Also, I just want to make it really clear. I don't think anybody here is arguing for or against legalization. I mean, marijuana is legal. I think most of us want it to be legal. We want it to be decriminalized. We want to end the war on drugs. We want it to be regulated. We want it to be studied. We want it to be researched. If you're looking at the, you know, what's going on nationally right now to try to get marijuana legal across the nation, it's all about that. It's all about, let's regulate it. Let's, you know, let's study it. That is what Prop 64 was about. What we're talking about is not about whether patients should be able to access medical marijuana. Of course they should. People should not have to suffer if they can get ease and comfort and, you know, have their pain relieved from medical marijuana. Of course not. What we're arguing is, does Fairfax, a town of 7,500 people, need a recreational medical or recreational non-medical retail storefront that is a direct retail outlet to the big cannabis industry in this town, considering the challenges that we already have with our youth use, considering the challenges that we might have with traffic, considering the challenges that we could have with all of these things, the high THC, these psychotic breaks that we're hearing about? I mean, the stories that we hear on the front lines, I only have 15 seconds, but it's just, is the, why? Why? And why now? Why now? Why rush? What do we have to benefit when we look at the long, long, long list, I know you've heard it, the long list of risks and harms that we would put ourselves and make ourselves vulnerable to? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you. Don Kearney, 32, Mountain View Road. I would really appreciate it if you all would read the Marin Voice piece I authored that was published yesterday. It references the prestigious Lancet Medical Journal current report on the THC content in today's marijuana triggering psychotic breaks and being highly addictive. Over the past 15 years, I've worked with 1,200 families. Of those 1,200 families, 800 of them were dealing with adolescents with marijuana issues. Of those 800, I would say 400 of those young people had ongoing severe marijuana issues that impacted that family profoundly. Opening a storefront tells young people this is normative. Please, don't make it normative. Don't make psychotic breaks normative. Don't make cannabis use disorder normative.
Thank you, Don. I would venture a guess that most of us read the Marin Voice. I know I did. So anyone else want to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'd like to bring it back. I know. I'm going to bring it back to the council, but I would like to propose an eight-minute break because before we deliberate, and it's about 9:40, so we'll reconvene a little before 9:48. Thank you. Okay, so we are exactly on time with the break for a change. So I just want to bring it back. And thank you, everyone who provided public comment. We know that it takes courage to stand up here, and we know that a lot of you prepared, and even those who didn't prepare as much. We appreciate all your comment, and we know it comes from your heart, and we take all the comments seriously. So with that, I'm going to bring it back to the council for deliberations. And I would just ask the council, you know, just interestingly enough, this is our 15th meeting between the Planning Commission and the council, but remember, before those meetings, we had a series of meetings on medical marijuana. So if we added those in, it's quite a few. And so I just want to remind folks that this is hard stuff, and it's very difficult. I understand that. But to the extent feasible, if we can think as concisely as possible and try to get our points out, I think the staff report was really helpful in, you know, kind of winnowing it down and seeing where we are. So I think it gives us the ability to maybe, you know, get your thoughts out. Maybe what we'll do is everyone kind of get their thoughts out, and then if we need to do another round, we'll do that. But let's do what we can, because people are patiently waiting, as usual, with us that's so late. And I see Channel 2 took off, so they're not as hearty as...
You know what? They figured out that they can get it off the internet, and they don't have to pay someone to be here.
I think...
I'm flattered that they came, but I think they figured that out.
I hope they figured that out, but I also saw the reporter say something like, "This is never going to end." So anyway, who is, I see Renee pushing the button.
I have a question.
Well, you had chances for the question.
What's the process? And how do you want to put, in what order do you want to take this?
I just kind of went through this.
No, 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 but like actual policy piece by policy piece.
I think, let me ask staff how you would like this. I kind of think that you could respond, each person could respond to the policy items, each one. And I realize you may want to change your mind after you do your initial response. So each person could go through the policy items, and then...
Broad strokes, in other words.
Yeah, I think, I think that would help. And thank you, Renee, for asking that question. So did someone want to go first? I see Peter looking very anxiously, getting close to pushing that button.
I could start, I suppose.
Okay.
Unless you're dying too, Bruce. So yes, thank you, everyone, for your comments. And it's been a very interesting process over the many, many months. And I've actually been persuaded to rethink some of my views based on community input. Let me start with the cultivation piece. I think the six plants for recreational is good. I think actually 18 for medical is a bit excessive, and I think that could lead to, you know, diverting to black market or youth uses. I had a close family member recently go through chemo and cancer and actually consulted with a medical doctor on using marijuana, very specifically using peer-reviewed medical studies and so forth. And it was very interesting that the dosages were extremely small, much less than what people would use recreationally. And that was with the advice of an actual doctor guiding him. So I think that 18 plants would be really, I think, excessive for medical. I would just say knock that down to 10, just because I know some people are going to want to apply for more, but I would knock that down somewhat. On the issue of retail in Fairfax, I respectfully disagree that the mere existence of a retail outlet that's 21-only would create a perception, harm reduction perception, or would send a message of permissiveness to youth. I don't think the existence of an actual retail establishment creates a moral hazard for youth that way. But it's also not a moral imperative. We don't need to have a retail store in Fairfax. And because of the kind of economic environment of marijuana, my concern for having retail establishment in Fairfax that was recreational adult 21 older is that it would, I think it would bring in a lot of traffic if we were the only store in the county. And I don't know if that's a good thing. I think that that could create problems. On the other hand, I'm also not, I'm not adamantly opposed to the concerns that a lot of people have expressed about not having a retail marijuana store in Fairfax for reasons which I disagree with, if that makes sense.
I didn't get that.
So in other words, it's not that, to me, it's not that important to have a retail pot store in Fairfax, one way or the other, for 21 or older. What does concern me, and again, it's as the environment for legalized marijuana is evolving, I actually think medical marijuana presents more of a hazard for youth access for the simple reason that the purchase age for marijuana medically is 18 years old. So in terms of youth access, being able to purchase marijuana if you're 18 versus 21 is a huge, and I think it increases the prospects for access, youth access tremendously. And I think that 21-year purchase age is a big bar. And I know from experience, when I moved to Texas my senior year of high school, drinking age was 18 years old, and the alcohol consumption was just over the top. And freshmen basically had access to Jack Daniels through their friends who were seniors in high school. So if we are really concerned about limiting youth access, I think it would be good to phase out the medical. 18-year-olds are going to, they've already figured it out. It's very easy to get a pot card. You can go to Amoeba Records and get one. So if you're concerned about making access to youth in Fairfax, limiting that, then logically, you would eliminate the store where they can buy it when they're 18 years old. I think what has happened, I think the delivery space, as they call it, has kind of filled in... in where most people are getting their recreational marijuana. And whether that's a good thing or not, it's kind of what, what has evolved. And I think the impacts of having a delivery business in town are probably pretty minimal, or having another delivery business in town is pretty minimal. There also seems to be political support for that among all, all sides of the debate. So, what I, I would actually, broad strokes, I would like to phase out medical and allow up to two delivery businesses in town. The advantage of having the local delivery business actually located in Fairfax is we do get the sales tax from that, which would be a benefit. Deliveries are coming in from all over. We may as well capture some of that revenue for ourselves, and we could also put other local restrictions on that. There's some talk about perhaps limiting THC content. I don't want to get into that. That's too complex right now, but something we could look at in the future. So, broad strokes, I've actually evolved where I think I would support a, two delivery businesses in town, gradually phase out the medicinal, and then we could do away, wouldn't need retail storefront, which would, well, I don't think it would encourage youth access. I think not having retail in Fairfax would avoid all the traffic coming into town. With respect to delivery, two finer points. One, I don't know if it's allowed in the CL and CH zones, but I would allow it in both those zones. Is it...
So, CL, CH, and CC.
Okay. And then, I would also consider requiring a dedicated parking space for any kind of delivery, just because of the, the nature of the product, and you don't want, you know, some guy having to walk three blocks to his car. So, those would be the broad strokes.
Did you want to weigh in on the buffer?
Yeah, on the buffer zone, I think if we have delivery only, I think the Planning Commission recommended very...
Excuse me, for folks speaking in the back, could you please do it in the hallway or outside? Thank you. Sorry, Peter.
Yeah, if we had delivery only, I think the buffer zone is a little less of a concern. Or rather, we could probably do with smaller buffer zones, I think. I think that was a general support.
Smaller than six hundred feet? I'm not sure what you're saying. What did you want there? So, the Planning Commission recommend, generally recommended six hundred feet, the state buffer zones? Is that what you're proposing, or something different?
I thought they had something lesser for delivery only.
They said two hundred.
Okay.
Two hundred, yeah. I would, I would probably be okay with a two-hundred-foot delivery...
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm incorrect. It was two hundred from a...
Through the mayor, yeah. The two-hundred-foot buffer you're thinking about relates to outdoor personal cultivation. With respect to delivery-only retailers, the Planning Commission discussed having the six-hundred-foot buffer around schools only and not having a buffer at all around youth centers and daycare.
Yeah, so my, my thinking on the cultivation, I think that's, that's a reasonable buffer zone. I think you could probably have a smaller buffer zone around schools for delivery, too, maybe three hundred feet, just because the business is a lot more low-key. And I would also mandate, you know, very minimal signage, you know, really restrictive signage for delivery, because there's no sense in, you know, advertising that. And, yeah, I think those are, those are all my comments, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe Bruce was ready, and I didn't see him. So, Bruce, apologize. Go ahead.
No, that's fine. Well, that actually, I agree with most of that. I'm surprised about the idea of the medical, although I do see your point, that indeed, medical, a medical card can be obtained at, I thought it was the age of nineteen, but eighteen or nineteen?
It's eighteen.
Not twenty-one. So, that, that's an issue, and I, I don't really know the facts on that. My understanding had been that the medical cards were not being used very much, but maybe they are now by people of that age because of, for that reason. But my, having thought about this a lot, and knowing that we will have a discussion here, and I'm very interested to hear what everyone says, but my thoughts at this point are that I would be in favor of allowing up to two business locations in town, either of which could have a combination, any combination of, I was thinking, medical, retail, storefront, retail, or medical, or adult-use delivery, but not an adult-use storefront. And my reason for the adult-use storefront, for not thinking we should have an adult-use storefront at this time in Fairfax, is because, and we've, I have to say, over the last little while leading up to this meeting, since the last Planning Commission meeting, I've seen sixty-two emails about this, of which sixty of them were expressing concerns about having a retail storefront. Two of them were in favor of it. So, I understand that there's, that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily reflect, if you were to put it on a ballot, but that's what I saw. And I read every one of those emails, and we've had lots more before this, and I appreciate the comments tonight. And I find a lot of these arguments pretty compelling regarding the youth, and regarding, and, and personal experience in my life has, has been consistent with having a real concern over what happens when people start using marijuana at an early age. It really, demotivation is a pretty good description of the first thing that happens, and that really, it's a sad thing.
Do you want to weigh in on the buffer zones?
The most compelling thing that I, that, to sort of summarize out of all these emails, one sentence that I thought really kind of pinned it down regarding Fairfax is, "Find a larger place where there's adequate infrastructure." I've said this at, at a council meeting a long time ago, that it, I find it unfortunate, from our point of view, that larger cities like San Rafael have not yet taken the step of allowing a retail storefront for adult use. They're taking a wait-and-see approach, and so are all the other jurisdictions, so is the county. It's leaving little old Fairfax, which has a downtown that you can walk from one end to the other of in ten minutes, and that's full of families and kids with, sort of left to somehow do this. And I just don't think there's room. A lot of people have said that they want to see it be discreet if we have a storefront, and I would certainly agree. But how can it be discreet in, by the time you draw the buffer zones, there's hardly any place left. And after we heard about the, the one school that seems to have been missed, the tutoring center, if you drew a buffer zone around that, there's really pretty much not much left. And it just is too small a town. It just doesn't fit. And maybe it would fit if they were all over the place, and ours was only one of many, but that's not the case. So, ours is going to be a huge attraction if we have the only one in the county, and it's going to be a huge attraction that can't be in a discreet location, because there isn't one. So, I come down on saying that this is just not the time to do a retail storefront for adult use. Otherwise, a lot of the comments that, that Peter just made, I agree with, with regard to, I think eighteen is too, is too high a number for a medical exemption for personal cultivation. Ten sounds like a reasonable number to bring it down to. And it's, I share exactly the same concern as to why, that it's, it just would be too easy for that to end up being used for other purposes.
Buffer zones?
Then the buffer zones, I, yeah, it's, and so, now, in what I would propose, we're talking about delivery primarily. For the delivery, I think the buffer zones don't have to be six hundred feet. They could be somewhat smaller. And I think they could be in any one of the, of the three zones, CCC, CH, or CC, or CL.
So, just one question...
And the dedicated parking space is probably a good idea.
Just one question, please. I thought I heard you say that you were supportive of a medical dispensary, but you didn't mention...
Well, no, I was, I was...
Did I mishear you?
What I said was, two locations, and either of those locations could have a medical dispensary, or could have delivery.
Okay.
But that, there is a question that I don't really know how to deal with right now, which is the fact that the one location that we already have is practically at the dead center of a buffer zone around, if you were to draw a buffer zone around the ball field. And I've heard, I've heard a number of things about that. One thing I've heard from a parent is that she heard from her child, her student, I shouldn't call them a child, Drake, Drake student, that, and this is just one story, but I've heard that the ball field is considered kind of the place to hang out if you want to go and smoke after school or whatever. And so, maybe the assumption, which we've heard a lot from people in West Marin Little League, that there's a concern about smoke wafting over the Little League games, that there was an assumption there in those emails that that has to do with the dispensary nearby, but that may or may not be the case. It may be just that our ball field happens to be the hangout, whether there's games or not. So, that would be something that... But regardless, if you look at the buffer map, the Marin Alliance is in kind of the wrong location. On the other hand, it's actually, physically, if you just walk around and you know Fairfax, it's actually a pretty good location, which is why it was put there in the first place. It is discreet. People have a hard time finding it. I like the fact that it's on a second story. All of that. There's parking. It's got a lot of advantages as to where it is. And so, I'm not sure what to do about that in terms of the law, other than grandfathering them in. But that's, does seem like a good location for one of the two possible business locations.
Thank you, Bruce.
Can I, can I just ask for one more clarification, Bruce? So, when you say up to two locations, so in theory, you would be amenable to two medical dispensaries?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm using the term "location" as the staff report did.
Right, and with a combination of recreational delivery in association with that medical dispensary.
It could be, it could be a combination, basically like the Marin Alliances right now.
But up to two.
Possibly up to a, yeah, two, two places, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. John, did you want to go ahead?
Sure. Let me see, and there's a lot, I guess, people are starting a cultivation, so I guess I will, too. It's on the top of the page here. Excuse me. And, and I think focusing on the numbers of plants is something that we've kind of fallen back on, because they're easy to count. And, you know, since we first made that judgment in relation to medical marijuana, however many years ago that was in cultivation, you know, a number of talented gardeners have come up to me and, you know, who don't grow pot, but they grow incredible tomatoes and all kinds of stuff. And he says, "Well, you know, it's as easy to grow as tomatoes, and if you're a good gardener, you can grow this, you know, a huge amount with one plant," you know, "and you see on the Internet, there's pictures of giant plants." So, I think that our, where we do have a hundred square feet as a further definition of the number of plants for medical growing, I mean, I think it's, that kind of language is important to have in there.
So, so in other words, go more by canopy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the six plants, and that's how California, state of California measures it, and that's, that's kind of where we've settled before. You know, I have heard some testimony from medical patients that, you know, they, yeah, they need to take plants and change them somehow, or maybe they're growing them inside, and they're really little, that they might need more than six. And I think that, that the approach of having, in effect, a medical note from your doctor in order to, you know, get a pass from the town manager is, is a pretty good system for that.
For up to how many?
Um...
With the exception?
Did you want the ten?
The exception, could be ten, could be eighteen. It doesn't matter that much to me. I mean, I'll go with the, the group if everybody's thinking ten, but I think you're kind of pulling numbers out of the air, to be honest.
Some, some would.
Because...
Okay.
Yeah, some plants are huge, some plants are teeny.
Okay, well, that's good.
And the teeny ones have different constituents in them than the big ones. So, I don't, I don't know that much about it, but I do know that there's a big difference in different strains and things like that. I mentioned before with a, I guess in regards to, you know, multi-units, I think Michael McIntosh brought up a good thing, but basically, that the property owner does set the rules for what happens on their property, and so I think that can take care of that concern. But I, I think lumping duplexes and triplexes in with multi-unit apartment buildings is a mistake, and we need to, you know, have that bit more granular. I mentioned already that we need to make allowance for, for greenhouses, because that's energy efficient compared to electricity. Let me see, and then, that's kind of, I think that's all the cultivation things we're talking about right now. I think really, what it comes down to, what we're talking about with storefronts or delivery-only and stuff like that, is the huge, is really access for kids. And I think Peter Brighten and Bruce are talking about something that's very important, in that with a medical card, that's kind of like a gateway into that medical system for teenagers, and we need to look at that. Frankly, brain, with brain development, age twenty-five is really where you stop getting the psychotic breaks that are caused by really high potency stuff. And this educational component needs to be there as part of our community conversation. And the other thing...
So, did you want to weigh in on the thoughts on the storefront, either adult use or medical?
Yeah, I'm getting to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, one of the things that was very interesting in the testimony that we're hearing here was different things that are available in stores, and the different things that spark off psychotic breaks. I mean, my, my wife, full disclosure, my wife works on the psych unit in, in Marin General, and deals with young patients every day. And, you know, and, and I know a number of other people in that field, too. And it's very real. And a lot of these, call them corporate products or whatever, you know, the, the company that was split away from Juul, you know, they have these little devices that deliver a huge quantity of THC, which is just off the charts. And a lot of the reactions we're seeing are from stuff like that. And I think if we can regulate the availability of that versus, one of the people was talking about the quality of what is available in a store in Sebastopol, which is kind of the equivalent of our good earth, he was saying in terms of vegetables, as opposed to the, you know, the bottle of Jack Daniels that, you know, is a whole different thing than, you know. I, I think that that will go a long way towards dealing with our youth. So, to get back to your question, Mayor, of recreational versus medical, it's a bigger question than, than that. And I think I am, personally, I think that the model that we have... the model that we have, we have a medical place that basically is, is going out of business as a medical place. And so it could well be that medical will sunset on itself, and per, I don't know what the laws are regarding Prop. 215, and whether that, those age limits can be the, you know, there, and, and I, I don't know whether we can tighten up something there to keep kids away from medical marijuana places. Um, but I think that model of having delivery of adult-use recreational is good. Um, I think competition is also a good thing. So, I'm hearing two from my fellow councilpeople.
I, I think, I think Peter said none for retail storefront.
Yeah, I'm not talking about retail storefronts.
Okay.
I'm talking about the delivery places, and I'm hearing two from them.
Okay.
I would actually even be comfortable with three, delivery only, or, or delivery along, i- if the medical and delivery is something that goes together, or maybe it's delivery only. Um, uh, you know, I, personally, I think the medical's, it's, it's a little squirrely. I mean, I think that it, as far as it's a gateway for our youth, then I think medical is a problem, but medical, there, there's a clear need for medical use of it. Not so much amount along, among our youth. I mean, I think it's an excuse to get a card, and then they can get in there. So I think we have to curtail that in some way, and we also have to work a lot on the educational component. But I would be okay with two or three delivery places, um, just to encourage that. In terms of buffer zones-
John, I still don't understand. You're saying two or three delivery-
Delivery businesses.
And then what about the walk-in medical? Or the walk-in recreational? You haven't really specified.
Walk-in recreational, I'm not good with.
Okay, so what about walk-in medical?
Walk-in medical, if that is a business that somebody chooses to do along with their delivery, I'm okay with that, as, on the discrete level that we've got, for instance, in our existing one, you know, it's limited signage, and, you know, it's not a big noticeable thing.
How many?
But personally, I don't see that that is going to be a good long-term business model, to be honest.
So if we don't sort of worry about that aspect, maybe, I mean-
I think it will curtail itself, is what I'm saying.
Correct, but did you want to say one or two? Did, did you have a number in mind for the medical dispensaries? Should it continue to exist, or did you not have a number?
I'm fine with three.
Three for medical dispensaries?
Sure. If, if somebody who's doing a medical, I mean, if they're trying to compete with other businesses, I don't think one should be allowed to have that, and the other one should not.
Okay.
Just in competitive fairness.
So just, just to be clear, it sounds like you're good with the idea of up to three medical dispensaries that would combine delivery that could be adult use or medical?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, and in terms of buffer zones, I'm not against putting a buffer zone around that tutorial tutoring place. Um, you know, because I, I drew a circle on the map that, you know, I estimated 600 feet. It doesn't leave a lot. It leaves three lots in town, which is not a lot. I mean, that's three lots, so, add a 3,400. So, um, that's not much. Uh, so I think a 600, for a delivery place, 600 feet is probably too far, because that's doing that. But having one next door, you know, it might be inappropriate for a, a tutoring place. Um, 200 feet, just to pull a number out of the air.
200 feet from-
For delivery, yeah, from, you know, from the schools that we're talking about before, and a tutoring, I mean, tutoring to me is, it's a school kind of situation. Um, and I think we really need to look at whether we can limit the products that are available. If we can, I, I don't know what the legality of that is or not, but I think, you know, I mean, it's, it's like in the prohibition, there was hip flasks with really potent firewater in them, you know. But basically, what people liked to drink was a glass of wine with dinner, you know, and, but that's kind of how it forced that. And, and I think that these high potency, small containers are really, you know, they're treating it as contraband, and that's something that's gonna be a problem with our youth. And I think that there's a market for, you know, kind of like the Good Earth sells good quality vegetables, you know, we could have probably a good-
Okay.
Quality bag of weed.
So did you have, okay, so it sounds like-
Any other questions that I need to hit on?
It sounds like we're good, okay.
Yeah, traffic, I think, is a big problem with recreational.
Okay, thank you. Renee, did you want to go?
Um, sure. Um, thank you, everyone, for, um, the thoughtful, unique blend of letters and public comment that we got, both on our email, um, and today, tonight, um, in public comment. Um, it is so helpful, and I hope everyone at home hears that it's really important to get involved in the public process and get involved early, and get educated as this community has on all sides of this issue, and I appreciate that a lot. Um, I, I did want to, I did keep a list, actually, of, of the people we heard from, not the names, but I'm gonna quickly read this, because we talk about getting 62 emails that were opposed to retail storefront, recreational, and then, um, but we don't know who those people are, and I'd just like to sort of kill any assumptions people might be having about who those people are. So I, I'll read them fast, because there is a lot. But we heard from PhDs in social behavioral science, we heard from the director of the San Geronimo Valley Community Center, we heard from multiple RNs and EMTs, the White Hill Life Skills teacher, school board member, superintendent, San Francisco Criminal Court official court recorder, teachers, Children for Change, youth court, primary care provider at Marin General, pastor of Sleepy Hollow Presbyterian Church, clinical professors at UCSF, um, the Marin County Office of Education, um, and it goes on and on and on. And so, lest anyone believe that this is a bunch of very frightened parents, and not to belittle that there are a lot of frightened parents who have done excellent parenting, I'm one of them, who are dealing with something that is out of control. So I appreciate, um, all of the input. Um, I, I wrote out a whole bunch of stuff like I normally do, but basically what I wanted to just say here is that, is that there are a lot of questions. I mean, there are big questions, and I've spoken to, um, the department, the, the, uh, the Health and Human Services, just to get that up to the minute, like, where are we, and what do we know, and what do we don't, what don't we know, and what can we control, and what can't we? Um, I asked about child-friendly packaging. Basically, it's been addressed. There are regs in the most recent January 16th regulations, but no one really knows what to do with them, because they've changed so many times. So I've seen some very lame attempts to kind of grow up the packaging of these things, and, um, it maybe changes the color, but they're still soda pop and chocolate and gummy bears, and they're very, very beautifully packaged. Um, we don't have any real oversight of labs. Labs have been shut down in San Diego and Sacramento. We depend on those labs in order to test THC. The government tests are testing on, as one of the young, young, young women who spoke tonight said, are being tested on 15 to 25 percent THC levels. We know what we're dealing with. Flowers are higher than in, you know, there, I, everybody out here probably knows better than I, but 30-plus percent, and the infusions in oils are up over 95 percent. We're not testing for those things. We have anecdotal evidence from what we're seeing in our emergency rooms as to what happens at those levels. Um, so labeling is a problem. There's no oversight from the state in terms of how we're really going to monitor, and the Fairfax Police is not a marijuana monitoring law enforcement agency. So if people call to complain, we don't have a lot of expertise and authority in this. And the Bureau of Cannabis Control is definitely not parked out anywhere in Marin County waiting to help us. So, um, these are things that we just don't know. I asked a lot about the environmental effects. I read some articles that are saying that the chemicals that they're finding are chemicals that are very plainly banned in most food products. Um, we know about that, uh, you know, what's happened with some of the environmental disasters. I'm not gonna talk and use these superlatives, but I've read multiple articles. Um, and there are, there, there is questionable certification for organics. So when I hear organics, and maybe that should be equated, you know, we should calculate that as we score these potential businesses, um, there is no organic certification. I, granted, there are people growing locally, they're doing probably cleaner practices than many organic certifications would certify, but this is not a federally approved drug, so there is no actual organics certification, as that's held by the feds, that, that particular certification. We, we, basically, I could go on and on, but we are grasping at straws in terms of product. I don't see any way in the near future that we would be able to regulate how high the THC levels are in the products that our stores would be selling. So, um, it concerns me. Traffic is a huge concern, impaired driving, another set of tests that have not been completed prior to legalization, which has empowered a lot of places to really open a lot of very cool stores. So for me, what it comes down to is the, the, that there are people asking, and rightly they should ask, to have a more convenient, a more comfortable way to experience and shop, um, in, in a, in a more boutique kind of marijuana environment. And I, I don't say that, like, in, in a belittling way. I understand how that would be cool. But the concerns, the unanswered questions, and this incredible outpouring of community, implooring us to really wait on this whole idea of having a recreational storefront in our town, I, I would say outweighs, to me, um, some of the other things that I've heard from the public. So I would not want to have a recreational storefront in town, which I thought I was going to be more of an outlier on, but it turns out not so much. Cultivation, I completely agree with Peter, um, and the numbers that he, uh, put forth. Buffers, 600 feet from schools, I agree with the cultivation. Here's what I think about the medical dispensary. I think that our medical dispensary has functioned here for a very long time, and whether people like Marin Medical Alliance's operations at this point, or the product, I'm not ready to say that we shouldn't have a medical dispensary in the town of Fairfax. Um, I, I would like very much that she would need to go through the application process. I think that level of competition is vital to getting the best possible store and the best possible product we can get here. Um, but I would ask that we would approve one medical dispensary with a combination recreational delivery, and one other business that would only be recreational delivery. That would be my, my request. And what did I forget? Buffers, delivery, retail. Oh, I had a question about cultivation. So in the ordinance, it says that the plants shall be, um, that the plants shall not exceed seven feet, but the fences shall not exceed six feet around the lot. But that means that the seven-foot plant is growing over the fence.
It would depend on where the plant's located. So it would only be visible if it was close to the property.
There's a provision, you can't see it from the public right away, so that's-
Okay, I just wondered where the random, is that just because our fence ordinance is six feet?
Right, fences are six, we just created seven, maybe you have lattice, but the main thing was visible from public right away. And I don't know if you recall, when we talked about this, I don't know if it was two, three years ago, we had looked at things that other communities like Sebastopol and some others came up with, and this is what we came up with in discussion.
Can you talk closer?
Sorry, this is what we came up with in discussions with the planning commission, with the council, and we kind of grabbed provisions from other communities like Sebastopol. But the key provision is you can't see it from the public right away. That's what drives the outdoor cultivation.
Okay, and when we look at, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, if you have a tall fence, that kind of identifies grows. If you drive up 101, you can just see these compounds that are 10 feet tall, and they've added on to them and stuff, you know, it's just, it's kind of a giveaway that alerts everybody. We're trying to keep it low-key.
Okay, and I would like very much to see what we can do in terms of looking at that buffer around TLC, the tutoring center, because, because it doesn't meet a state definition, doesn't mean that it isn't in every way a youth center.
Okay.
So, one thing I wasn't clear on, though, Renee, if, if, if Councilmember Goddard, is in terms of delivery-
Vice Mayor.
That's okay.
She wants to be called Vice Mayor.
I, I still go by Renee.
Is, what, um, for a delivery-only business, was there gonna be any, any, uh, any change in the buffer, the 600-foot buffer, and if, if it were a distance, or if it were the type of uses?
If it were delivery-only, no, I would go with what the others have said about buffers. I don't think it's as important-
Okay.
As certainly the buffer around the dispensary.
Okay.
Okay, well, I think it's-
Well, I, I think that I should clarify-
It'll never be my turn.
That earlier I said, yeah, 200 feet, there's 200 feet for cultivation, as we were talking about, and I was talking about 200 feet for delivery only, especially if we're talking about that tutoring place.
I think you were clear on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so-
There's a range of opinions.
Okay, so thank you. Um, so I want to emphasize again, I don't use any drugs, any marijuana, don't drink alcohol. I think people have heard me say that, it's a little bit of a broken record. So I have no interest in personally using any of these products. But I may be odd man out on some of these things. Um, and I, again, want to thank people for coming here, and I think it was good that we had kind of both sides represented on here, people who wanted to be more rigorous, people who wanted to be less rigorous, and I think that's helpful. Folks don't always come out. So, um, a couple things, and I got a little confused, because I went through the staff report, but I don't want to go into that level of detail. Um, just, one question. I, I agree with what our earlier decisions were on eliminating certain uses, but before I go on, the eliminating the cannabis temporary events, which I completely agree with, in the ordinance, there's some way to allow cannabis temporary events, so that kind of confused me quite a bit. And so, I don't know if, it's not that important to weigh in on it, but Amanda, did you want to add something? There's, you know, if we're saying we're not doing them, I don't know why there's something in the ordinance that allows the town manager to approve one.
There shouldn't be anything in the ordinance allowing the town manager to approve a cannabis temporary event. What the ordinance should say, so, um, temporary events, since it's not really a permanent land use per se, it's not in the zoning ordinance, it should be addressed in the business regulations. And what my recollection is, is that we said that, um, temporary events would not be allowed unless they're authorized by a separate ordinance or resolution of the town council.
Well, that's where I saw that.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering why we would even bother with that if we're saying we're not allowing that. Why would we even allow the possibility of the town council doing a resolution to support it?
Well, um, I think, one, I just wanted to, to address the issue of the temporary events, but because it's not an ongoing business, to me, it made sense, it would make sense that if the town were to allow it, it would be, be a separate, a separate ordinance or some future regulations.
Okay, I, I think I would say this, just, um-
We could take it out.
It seems better to take it out, because if we've already made that policy decision, at least for now, I, I hate to see us having a, you know, 420 event in Fairfax. Um, but, okay, so I agree with that. And as far as, I also- And as far as, I also agree with the way the planning commission came out, which was only medical retail, adult-use retail, and delivery uses should be considered. And the way they have the combination of the three use types. Before I came here, I was thinking about three potential locations, but I think I'm better with the idea of two potential locations. And I would continue to allow the existing medical dispensary with adult-use retail delivery only. However, I do have concerns that we worked really hard for that adult-use delivery, and now it's four months later, and we still don't have a local permit app coming in. And I know some of it is they have to do some reconstruction in the building. But I think we ought to set a timeframe. If they have not submitted that application in something like nine months total, that they, they would have to go through this whole process again. And I liked the way the planning commission said, allow them to stay in that current location with the adult-use delivery, but they would not be allowed to be considered for adult-use recreational. The next piece on the personal cultivation. I agree with the six mature plants, either indoor or outdoor. I think for purposes of moving forward, rather than splitting hairs on multifamily, to stay with the six total outdoors per property, rather than, I think we're at a level of detail where I don't think we need to worry about the triplexes and duplexes, or the HOAs, of which I live in one, at this point. I think we can revisit this in the future to really fine-tune some of these things. And the either medical or adult-use recreational. I do like the 200-foot buffer from the schools and daycare centers. I don't like the 18 plants, that seems excessive for the exception. And I also know some of what we've seen with other medical things, that sometimes there are doctors who will write things for people who don't want vaccines or other things. So I, I think 10, with the exception, was a good number. The buffer zones, the storefront retail and the CH and CC, delivery only in the CL, CH and CC. The storefront retail from the school daycare use center, the 600 feet, sounds fine to me. The retail delivery, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure on the number or what the setback should be, but I don't think we need to necessarily have the 600 feet, maybe 300 or 200 feet. I do also like Peter's suggestion of the dedicated parking space for delivery, because it's true, we don't want those drivers trooping all over Fairfax to look for a parking space. And let me see if I missed anything. So I'm totally the odd man out, because I'm the only one interested in a retail storefront. But otherwise, did I answer all of your policy questions, or did I miss something?
Yes, I think for, for tonight's deliberations, this is great. We've got very clear direction.
Okay, so bringing it back to the council, did anyone want to add something? I mean, okay.
I'll try to be as brief as possible.
Okay.
In terms of, you know, people needing medical marijuana, you know, they can get the same marijuana products from the recreational delivery services, too, for the most part. I think there's only suppositories which are.
There's, there's three products that Lynette has told us about that are purely medical.
Right.
Suppositories are one of those.
But for the most part, you know, the other, other types and blends and combinations of CBD versus THC and edibles, those are all available through, you know, delivery services that are recreational. Again, the.
Just, just one point. I have a friend with terminal cancer, and she requires suppositories. So it actually, that's the only thing.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's probably a workaround for that. The, in terms of the existing dispensary, I mean, I'd, I'd be willing to grandfather in, or I guess not require that business to go through the, you know, the application process for delivery only, if that, if medical was to be phased out. I think that would be a reasonable concession for them. And, you know, just in hearing, just in rethinking, I, I don't think a buffer zone's very critical for delivery, especially if it's, if we have really tight regulations about what the delivery business has to be, like, you know, opaque and so forth, not extremely low-key. With respect to delivery, I would also, at some point, like to see our police actually do enforcement, do sting operations with, at homes using minor buyers, because I think we do need to enforce that. And if any delivery service is coming into Fairfax and selling to minors, they should be busted, just like a bar that's willing, or a liquor store that's willing to sell to minors. Anyways, that's just a little further down the road. The, one of the regu, one of the points made on the scoring for the public biz, for the business, the locally sourced organic pesticide-free products. I, I think that that is actually not that useful of a criteria, because with marijuana locally sourced, if it's grown indoors, means that it's, actually has quite a big carbon footprint versus a product that's grown outside and transported further. And I think marijuana does have to be pesticide-free. I think it is tested before it's sold.
It's not completely pesticide-free, but there's a, there's a limit, right, on the pesticides, but it's very limited versus what you get on the street.
Okay, well, that, yeah.
What you get on the street, not me. I'm just kidding.
I grow my own. So. So anyways, those are just some comments that I wanted to respond.
Thank you. All right. You know, it's okay if, I have one thing to add, but if anybody has anything to add, I think staff has direction. It's okay not to add any.
I guess, I think it would be good to ask staff after we, after we all finish, whether there's any open questions, but.
He just said there weren't. He felt like there was enough. So, Megal? Okay, so just.
And I will say, I thought that the, the outline of the process for processing applications was basically, looked really good, so.
So I just want to say a few points that, I'm sorry it's late, I'll make them quick. I've talked about that I don't use these products, I don't smoke, take drugs, do alcohol, haven't for many, many years. I've also noted that 77.6% of the voters in Fairfax voted for Prop 64. We've heard a lot of testimony over the last year and a half, and also through emails about normalization of cannabis. And I, you know, it's been here for decades, and I continue to be dismayed that having a safer, regulated products concerns folks when unregulated cannabis is mixed with a lot of nasty pesticides and other chemicals. And also, street dealers are already in Fairfax and have been so for many, many years. Many of you go back way more years than me here. My feeling is that we need to respond to the voters, while we also acknowledge the concerns raised by many. I also feel that we need to realize that kids are getting drugs and marijuana from street dealers or even at home. Well, I don't feel that we need, that we can eliminate all the street dealers. I think we can mitigate their presence some by allowing a reasonable number of regulated legal businesses used for cannabis in our town. Illegal cannabis grows, dealers, and other businesses have contributed to rampant crime, some of the hideous murders and more, and they destroy the environment while doing so by clear-cutting, excessive watering, and pesticide and other chemical uses. I'm not under any illusions that all illegal activities, including street dealers, will cease under legalization. I'm also under no illusions that use of cannabis is completely safe for anyone or everyone, as many advocate. We know that prohibition didn't work for alcohol. We also know that the war against drugs has been an abysmal failure. Prohibition has also not worked for cannabis. By allowing a reasonable number of businesses that are regulated by the state in Fairfax, we can mitigate some of the criminal activity and environmental damage, and also lower our carbon footprint. Otherwise, people will drive to Cotati, Oakland, Richmond, and other locations, and they'll order from delivery services all over the Bay Area. For me, it's not about revenue, and people have brought that up. I don't think Fairfax is in the business of saying, hey, we're going to make a lot of money off this. I don't, that's not my interest. I think we can support the voters, we can lower crime, and many negative environmental impacts, and that's why I continue to be supportive of doing something reasonable in Fairfax. Thank you. So Renee, did you want to wrap up? No, or?
I just want to know what, what Ben, what you're taking back in terms of the numbers. Just, would you summarize for us?
Prelimarily.
And buffers?
Yes.
Because to me, it's, that's not entirely clear about what we talked about in terms of the 1600 block of Drake.
Right. Well, in terms of delivery only, what I'm hearing is a reduced buffer, potentially as small as 200 feet. In terms of the number of, well, I'm hearing that the council does not want storefront retail, except, with one exception.
Sorry.
And so it would be medical only. I think we're going to need to discuss how that combination of medical, retail, and delivery-only adult use would be combined, and come back to your council with that. But it appears that there's going to be some combination of those, once we assemble our notes and look at that.
So what is the next step? Would it come back to us in June? Or Janet, did you want to weigh in? I saw you waving your hand.
I just said that we're gonna, we're going to, we've taken very good notes, and we may contact some of you to clarify some of these notes, but we've taken very good notes, and we will be back to you.
Well, that's the question. So the question, if we come back to you in June, Janet and Amanda won't be here at the, for the June meeting. They'll be here for the July meeting, but we can come.
I have a conflict on the June meeting, so Heather Lee is actually going to need to sit the June meeting. But there's no reason why that couldn't come back. Amanda will.
Amanda will be moving on to.
Amanda will not be around for a few months, yes. And she will, we do have another, another Amanda, her name is Ashley. And she is available for also a few more months. She's due in August, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're, we're populating the world out of your.
We are, yes, we are.
BBK. So I, I would suggest that even though we'll miss both Amanda, and wish you well, Amanda, as well as Janet, I think to the extent feasible, if we can bring this in June, I think that would be great with Heather sitting in.
There shouldn't be any issue or any problem. The ordinance will be drafted, and, and you'll have it in advance, and so you can see it. And, yes, John.
Yeah, I think we've wrestled through most of the thorny issues.
Right, right. The hard work is done, I think.
Yeah, I mean, my legal question is whether we can limit the products available.
When you say the products available?
In terms of THC content, or the, you know, the high-tech, high, you know, high potency deliveries?
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah.
Let the expert answer that one.
So I'm not aware of any local jurisdiction that has actually tried to do it. But that said, the Prop 64, as amended by McCruza, does provide local authority to adopt local health and safety regulations, and as a local, as a local regulation intended to preserve the health of Fairfax's community and youth. I think there's definitely an argument to be made that we have that authority. It's consistent, we, you know, we'd have to look at what the state has already done. I know that the, for manufactured products, there are THC limits per package and per serving. So it's something we could definitely explore further, and just, you know, kind of with the caveat that it's untested territory.
Well, what I would suggest, because I think we have a lot that can be tightened up for the June meeting, and rather than getting into a huge policy discussion again, I don't think we'll finish or even do a first reading at the June meeting, I suspect. Well, let's do this. If you can find some way to come back with a provision that would regulate product before you take off, Amanda, and maybe make a suggestion, I would say that all the products are, just look at Don Carney's Marin Voice. I think in the 60s and 70s, it was 3% THC. I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing like that. There's nothing even close to that anymore. It's way up there. So I think, you know, to the extent feasible, try to put in a provision on that. And, but let's, it's nearly 11 o'clock. I would like to wrap this item up.
Mayor, with all due respect, I think this is really important, and I think it affects our youth a lot, and I, I have, personally, I had no problem with Fairfax.
Well, so I'm asking them to bring it back.
We've done that a lot, and, and if we get an opinion back, I'd like to just, maybe by even a show of hands, if other council members are willing to entertain tighter regulations.
Well, let's, let's do this. I've asked them to bring it back with some product regulation in there. You'll have that discussion in June, and they're not prepared to discuss it tonight.
Of course they're not, but, you know.
Mayor, if I may, I, I support the idea of looking into having local regulation of these, you know, extremely high potency products. I do think that that's actually a really complex thing, and I think the thing we should do is probably try to move forward with the ordinances that we're contemplating, and then come back to that, because I think it actually is a really technical thing to get into specifying concentrations and, and products that you would allow or not allow.
And also, John, what I heard talking to the county today is that.
Could someone turn their phone off, Don?
Is that mine? I thought it was mine. Is that with the lab situation, the way it is, the very few labs that have actually been permitted, and then.
You don't even know? Yeah.
We don't know. And that's what they said, that's what's made it so hard, and, and many, many jurisdictions have asked this exact same question, is how do we deal with not getting this crazy stuff being sold in our stores? And they haven't figured out a way to do it in any kind of empirical way, because the labs are private.
Yeah, well, I think that these, you know, corporate-produced, you know, 70%, 90% contraband delivery devices are really a problem.
But I do think Peter's bringing a good point, which is, yes, it's valid, yes, it's important, but at this point, it's, it's really, I think we ought to move forward, and then it can always come back with direction to staff, once we go forward with our first reading.
Okay.
That we'd like to research this more and have a tweak to the ordinance once it's done.
Yeah, I'm fine with not holding this up with that, but it might be as simple as saying, no electronic vaping devices.
Well, I think, I think that's, okay, so, so let's wrap this one up. You have enough direction, and it is.
I just want to know real quick, I didn't know if you got that, I think it's really important that we take the existing medical dispensary with recreational delivery. important that we take the existing medical dispensary with recreational delivery into the application process from de novo, so that we actually-
Well, that was your opinion. I don't think that was everyone's opinion here.
Oh, I didn't know if anyone else weighed in on it.
No, I, I did. And I only said for the delivery, if they don't submit a local application within nine months. But no, I, I don't support going through de novo.
We can't, we can't for the medical.
Well, so the reason, the reason that one felt very reasonable to me is that there would be an equal footing on anyone new who might want to come in and open. You can't do that. You can't require the application.
From the existing medical dispensary? No, not the way they're permitted?
It's a use permit.
It's a use permit.
But you'd have one, they were granted.
No, no.
No.
They have a, okay.
They have a use permit for the medical.
They have a use permit for medical.
They do.
So they're allowed for medical. If you're suggesting the delivery component, if they don't submit by a certain time, as the mayor suggested, then they could go through that permitting process.
No, I'm more talking about the dispensary parts.
Okay, well, then, yes, they, because they already have a use permit.
So let's, let's wrap this item up, because it is 11 o'clock, and I don't think you need a motion or anything at this point, right?
We have direction. We're fine.
Okay, so let's do this, because we missed the 10 o'clock. So we want to review the agenda at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock to ascertain which items shall be continued. And I would say that we have four items left. And I would say the council reports, we already agreed that those should be submitted in writing, and the verbal reports would only highlight one item. I think we have had verbal, or written reports from all except one, and we were not intending to go over all those. So I think we should just defer that for written reports for the next time. And I have, there is someone who's been waiting here patiently for number 15. And I would like to do that before item 14. But let me ask the timing on item 14. Garrett, we can't defer item 14 at this point, can we? We really have to do it.
You could, to your budget workshop, if you wanted to. But at some point, you really need to discuss and give direction.
Can we do this at the budget workshop as the first item?
Sure, you can.
Would that, I see a grimace.
Yeah, I mean, you can. I think the benefit of talking about it at council meetings, you have more people attend council meetings, and so they can, the public can see a little bit more. But we could start the discussion at the budget workshop, if that needs to be the case.
So I'm going to suggest that we do item 15, 16, and 17 first, and then go into item 14. So those are second readings. Oh, no, let's do, can we, can we move item 17? We're very close on that, but I think it's going to engender some discussion. Can we move item 17? We're close, but that would be a first reading. So, thank you, Amanda, and congratulations.
So 15, then 17.
I'd like to do 15, 16 first, then do item 14, and move item 17 to the June meeting.
Well, let's see, let's see where we get, because we, we might get through these things quickly enough.
All right. Well, we'll revisit this at 11:30.
Sure.
But for right now, we're going to go through 15, 16, and then item 14.
Sounds good.
Okay. And at 11:30, we'll make a decision on 17. Okay, so I'm confused where we are. But, no, item 15, and David Levin has been here so quietly for so long. Our hero. Okay, would you like to do the staff report on the mandatory mediation?
Sure.
Item 15.
Item 15, this is actually a second reading of the ordinance. At your April 3 meeting, you introduced the ordinance. Tonight's a second reading. If you adopt it, it'll take effect 30 days from tonight. In essence, it's an ordinance requiring mandatory mediation for rent increases in ex, in it, in excess of 5% within, within any 12-month period. Mediation is non-binding. In essence, you may recall that you also adopted a just cause ordinance. So in combination, you combine mandatory mediation with just cause. Those two policies address different issues. But in essence, it kind of provides a more comprehensive approach for rent protections. And that's pretty much the staff report.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, I'd like to open it up to public comment. And David, you should be up first. Thank you for coming from far away.
You gotta push the button.
Push the button. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here and want to express gratitude. I'm David Levin, managing attorney, Legal Aid of Marin. On behalf of our clients, who this ordinance will help, because every day we see low-income renters struggling with the housing crisis, would like to recommend an excellent article that was in the San Jose Mercury over the weekend, called "The Price We Pay," and talked about, across the whole Bay Area, what the housing crisis is causing. One of the indicators they mentioned is in 2012, they said 70% of Bay Area residents could afford the median rent, and now that number is down to just 30% across the Bay Area. So it's really some stark statistics and problems that we see every day at Legal Aid of Marin. We've also seen the benefits from the county's mandatory mediation ordinance, and, you know, provides gentle guidance, non-binding 5% limit, that is actually more than twice, you know, what the inflation rate or cost of living increase has been for several years. So just anecdotally, we, we have seen rent increases that seem to be keeping just below that 5% guidance. So that helps on that side. And then also opening up a dialogue, in some cases, it's very helpful between renters and owners. We've seen the benefits of that. And just want to offer, if there's any assistance, Legal Aid of Marin can provide going forward. We'd like to do that. We just want to say thank you.
Thank you, David.
Counsel, so how I look at-
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, counsel. How I look at this is to look at it a little differently. So define what rent might be. Because when we look at, for instance, every time a utility goes up, the town gets some sort of commission where the town benefits. So when the garbage goes up, 19%, what do you guys get? 10% of that increase? And our water, since I have a two-inch meter, and I was trying to get, ascertain that today at the Marin Coalition last Thursday, collectively, my water rates could go up with a lowered tier, you know, because conservation does hurt us when it comes to pricing, approximately 30%. Our sewer fee just a couple of years ago was at $6.92, and now for a multifamily, so a small unit, it's at $8.28. So when you look at this, as well as the pending bonds and the fees for the gas, electric, P G and E, if you have a unit less than $1,500, that'll far exceed the 10, the 5%, just the utilities. And then, oops, what about Measure J, which is going to increase $10 per year, from what I understand. So you're actually doing a taking. A taking is defined as by one body taking from somebody disproportionately for the whole. So you're really putting this crisis on someone who has multifamily homes like myself, unless you separate those variables that you do control, such as utilities. So if you want to restrict this to the costs and capital and interest to hold something and maintain it to 5%, absolutely. But when you wrap it in, when some of this, as myself, try to include all the utilities and everything else, so my tenants don't have to go chase these different things, you're asking me to subsidize your increases and your wants. That's where it's a taking, because it's not proportional for the entire community. It's disproportionate. You're asking me to subsidize your wants. So I would like you to review how you do this, and define and/or restrict rent to exclude all the utilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Richard?
So I'm not as well-informed on this issue as maybe some others, but I can speak from a few personal things. So before I was a homeowner, I was a renter for like about 35 years, and I benefited immensely, living in San Francisco for most of that time, with rent control, which was cost-of-living index. When I came to Fairfax, it never even occurred to me that anyone could do whatever they wanted, more or less. And I started as a renter, actually, just a couple blocks from here, and the landlord, who was out of state, jacked me 10% every year. And that's essentially what prompted me to buy a place at all, because at a certain point, I was paying his mortgage, and I could have paid my own. So I'm very, very sympathetic to sort of renter mentality and affordability issues. That said, some of the things that Michael was commenting on about, you know, the other kinds of increases we get around here for water and garbage and other things that may not always be mapping directly to that. So I don't have an exact recommendation or whatever, but I think it's, it's a little bit of a complicated issue, and hopefully you can think it through carefully.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm just going to keep this quick. This, I'm Liesl Blash. I live at 22 Pacheco Avenue in Fairfax. And we're not talking here about rent control. We're talking about 5% trigger for a mediation process that somebody has to ask for. So it says mandatory mediation, but the tenant or the landlord has to request it. And it's not binding. So I don't understand the concern here. All you have to do is meet with the person and go through mediation. And, you know, I mean, it's not the same as saying that you are, you're, it's not a taking. You're not telling somebody that they are limited to 5%. That said, I'm going to say that the state is now considering a statewide rent gouging legislation that would cap rents at, I think, 5%. And they're considering 10% rent gouging. So, you know, there's, things may happen at the state level that are very different than what would happen here. But this is not a rent gouging or cap on rents. It's simply a trigger that asks people to mediate if one of the parties asked for it. So I just wanted to put that up.
Thank you, Liesl. Wendy?
Hi, Wendy, and I live in Fairfax for now. This is so minor, as far as renter protections go, but I would so much rather have this than nothing. And I can't even tell you how many people have said to me, they had no idea that there were no renter protections in Marin County and Fairfax. People are clueless, including renters, until something happens to them, because people assume that there's protections. And this, this legislation, to me, encourages people to talk to each other, and I don't see what's wrong with that. Personally, I would rather, I would love to see more protections than what we're doing. But I don't, this is so, it's not going to negatively affect anybody to ask people to talk to each other. Thanks.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, I see no other speakers on this item, so I'm bringing it back to the council for potentially a motion.
Yeah, if I could just comment to Michael's concern, and I think I agree with Wendy and Liesl, that, you know, if you did get hit with a really big sewer increase or other increase, that certainly would be a factor that you could discuss with your tenant in terms of why you would want to raise the rent significantly. So, you know, that's, the purpose of the ordinance is to encourage a dialogue between the landlord and the tenant. So those, those types of things would be certainly very reasonable to discuss with your tenants if you did contemplate needing to raise the rent.
So would someone like to make a motion, potentially?
I would, I would love to make a motion, that we read by title only and adopt an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, adding chapter 5.55, entitled "Mandatory Mediation for Rental Increases," to Fairfax Municipal Code Title V, requiring mediation for rental increases exceeding 5%.
Would someone like to second that?
I would second that.
Okay, so that was Vice Mayor Goddard, and second by Ackerman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? That measure passes. Thank you. Thank you, David, for coming so many times. Okay, moving on to item 16. And that is the second reading by title only, and adoption of an ordinance amending Fairfax Municipal Code regarding the abatement of public nuisances, et cetera. Garrett, did you want to give the staff report?
Sure. As you indicated, it's a second reading. You introduced it at your April 3 meeting. If you adopt this evening, it'll take effect in 30 days. In essence, the ordinance, the amendments, really help to update and clarify our existing nuisance abatement procedures and cost recovery provisions. It really just reflects state law, in essence. So that's pretty much the staff report. But if you have specific questions, the town attorney is more than willing to answer your questions.
And I, I believe there were some changes last time, that I checked to make sure they were addressed, and I thought they were. Did anyone have any questions for staff? Seeing none, did anyone have to, would like to make public comment on this? Michael?
Thank you, counsel. I would like to, and briefly trying to read through your language for you to better define what things can lead to abatement. Because with such a general term, I understand the advantage, for instance, if there's a fire hazard, and we want to reduce the load. Okay, great, we might need access for that. But without really defining all things, because it talks about a nuisance, but a nuisance defined where? On private property, public property, access sidewalk? We want to define that so we can really say what you have the authority to abate. Because whether it's your home or someone else's home, you don't want somebody, when it's not defined, so it's capricious or subjective, to say, well, we're going to abate this. I remember in time, a few years ago, when there was a challenge I brought to you guys, because at that time, I think Garrett was misdirected, and you guys filed an abatement on me, because you wanted to cut the foundation out of my bridge for the past story pipe, which was very easy for me to warn you, so I didn't even have to spend any fees, which I'd be able to recover. But I encourage you to better define what you're looking at when you cite your authority to expand for abatements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anyone else want to comment on this item? Seeing none, bringing it back. So did anyone want to make a motion?
Oh, just, just a quick comment. We, we do actually have a, a pretty good definition, which is drawn from state law for public nuisance, and that's in section 1.1205, subsection I, defining a public nuisance. So, and, that's on page-
It's on page two.
Two of the staff report of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. So would someone like to, go ahead?
Ben?
Next up?
I'll, I'll move to adopt, read by title only and adopt an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending Fairfax Municipal Code, Chapter 1.2, regarding abatement of public nuisances.
Someone want to second?
Second.
So that was Councilmember Lax, and Councilmember Reed, second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that measure passes. Thank you. So now we're moving on. I will interrupt you at 11:30 to, or I will interrupt us at 11:30 to make a decision on item 17. So Garrett, would you like to give the staff report?
So for 14, I actually have a PowerPoint. Do you want me to load that up?
Sure.
Excuse me, did you say 17 or 14?
Item 14?
It's number 14. I apologize.
So item 14, this has to do with your discussion, basically, of the renewal of Measure J, which is, which is your special municipal tax. Maybe as a little history for the viewing audience, first was initiated in March 2005. That was Measure F. It was a five-year special muni tax of $125 per dwelling unit, or business occupancy, basically a commercial unit. We roughly use an estimate, a little over 3,600 units. So that's what we collect the tax from on an annual basis. It is renewed in November 2009. It was Measure I, and that was a five-year extension. You may recall, in 2014, voters approved the Measure J, which was a five-year extension of the muni tax. Measure J was a little different in the sense that you- Measure J was a little different in the sense that you combined the existing general municipal tax of $50 per unit with Measure F, the $125, and then you slightly increased it to $195 per unit of the special tax. Currently, it's a five, they had approved a five-year extension, which actually expires in June 2020. Terms of the key policy issues we really need some direction, discussion on, is really, should you renew the tax? We'll go through why we think it'd be a good idea. Should you add specific uses? Again, it's a council discussion. How long should you extend it for? Should it be the same amount? Should it be higher? Should it be lower? Should there be some type of annual incremental increase to it over time? And so currently, as you know, we use it for police, we use it for fire, and that includes some of the fire prevention inspection activities. We use it for youth and senior programs. We use it for public works improvements, which includes pedestrian trails and sidewalks. And we also use it for matching grants, funds for grants, like streets, bridges, and so on. Terms of, for Measure J, where does the money come from? Actually, it represents about 6% of your total general fund revenue, which is a little over $10 million. You could see, that's Measure J there. Sorry, it's a lot of green. Property taxes is half, then you have sales tax with your Measure C, sales tax, and your regular sales tax. So fairly large portion of your operating revenue. Similarly, where does the money go? You could see, this is where the money goes. 6% of that revenue goes to fund your general fund operations. You could see, if you took some departments and you actually, 6% would be equivalent of eliminating an entire division, like public works or planning and building. So it's a pretty substantial portion of your operating budget. This is the five-year forecast in the, in the current budget. What you'll see there is it goes through and shows what would happen in fiscal year 2021 if you did not receive renewal of Measure J, about $710,000 a year. In essence, what happens is you'd be okay the first year, the next two years, you obviously would have to change your spending patterns, because at some point, your third year out, you would start, you would get reserves at about 15%, and you start to have some cash flow problems. Obviously unsustainable, you would change something before then, and what this graph shows is what's the impact to your general fund reserves if you did not have a renewal of Measure J. Obviously, it just goes straight down, because you would be dipping into it. Again, that assumes you're not changing your spending patterns. So, one of the first questions is, how long should you extend it for? Something to keep in mind on the extension is that the elections or the measures to extend it have to occur at the general elections, unless you could do some special findings. So what that means is, for example, if you set another five years, that means that in 2024, since starting next year, all elections will be in even number of years, you would have to have another election or a measure on 2024, so you would have a gap in that revenue with the following year. So that's something to keep, keep in mind generally. If you take a look, and if you do it longer, it'd be the same thing, the idea is, for example, if you extended it for 11 years, really, you would be putting on the ballot in year 10. There is no rule that you can't put it on ballot ahead of time, but typically, our manner of practice has usually been the year before it expires. So that's one thing to think about. Obviously, gives a little, longer the term, gives a little more predictability, stability to your funds. Every five-year forecast, we're always projecting you're going to lose. In this case, what happens if you don't receive Measure J? Gets a little tougher for the council, makes some long-term planning decisions without that stability in revenue. And what we did here was give you an idea, if you thought you wanted to increase the amount, what that means. And so you could see, what we did here is every $5 increase is about a 2.5% increase. You get roughly about $18,000 more a year. What the table shows is $5 is $18,000, but if you were to make it $25, and this is all in year one, you would collect a little over $90,000. Terms of, sorry, annual incremental increases, something to keep in mind, we thought, something you might want to take a look at is what they do for the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, where you just have a set amount you increase each year. What this table shows is, if you actually did a $5 increase per year, what would that mean? Roughly, obviously, the percent just changed, but like 2.5%, 2%. And you could see it would go up, if you started at 195 to 200, and going up to 225, you would see what that does in the annual amount collected and the revenue, revenue pattern. This just shows it if it, we went out to 15 years, just to show if you did 15 years, what that would mean in terms of the revenue. You could see the $5, because the total amount increases, pretty much, the $5 represents to 2.5%. Probably less than inflation, who knows what inflation would be, but probably reasonable to assume you're just barely keeping up with inflation. Terms of different amounts, we ran a scenario with a $10, and that's also in your, your packet. What would it be if it's a $10 increase? Again, you could see, $10 obviously is more, it's double, so it's like a 5% increase, probably between a 4% and 5%. Well, 5% increase, and it's going to go down each year. You could see what you accumulate in the packet. We also showed you a $7 per year increase. So again, you're really to the level of just giving some direction on where you think you want to be in terms of things you want to consider. And what that all means is, ultimately, typically in the past, in June, we've come back to you with a proposed ordinance, a resolution calling for the election. The resolution includes the ballot language, and in the past, sometimes the council has appointed a subcommittee to actually draft the actual ballot language. There's a lot of other steps, but the key point right now is, what are these different policy considerations? How would you like to approach it? And we're just starting the conversation, looking for some direction. Obviously, you have a budget meeting in May 10, so you can continue that discussion if you need to, but we really wanted to start that discussion and give you the information needed to give us some direction.
Okay, so first, I just want to say, does anyone have any questions of staff? Just questions, because, okay, Peter?
I do. I'll, I'll take my question down here. So as, do I understand correctly that however many years we decide to have this tax last, that if, for the renewal, we have to time it so that it falls on an even election year?
No, we'd be doing it this year.
Right, we'd be doing it this year, but we'd have to, like, our choice would be, okay, it expires in 2022, 2024, 2026, or plan for that election in the next even year.
Yes, yeah, it has to be at your general election year, so that's correct, even years.
Okay.
So Peter, you might want to come up here, because I don't think they can film you down there. So come on up. Anybody else have just questions for staff?
Maybe it's because it's late, but just give me a little explanation of the $5 incremental increase.
The, the five, well, the $5 increase, and here's the slide, what that does is, it takes it from 195 to 200.
Right.
And really, the impact, it represents about a 2.5% increase, and it generates about $18,000 more a year.
And then each, and then you're adding five each subsequent year?
One scenario is you could build in a factor where it just increases $5 a year, similar to Ross Valley Paramedic Authority. The thought pattern being it, in essence, keeps up with inflation, or comes close to keeping up with inflation.
Yeah, I think that's fairly common. The mosquito district's assessment is similar. There's a built-in, you know, increase each year.
Well, typically, a lot of them do percentages. A lot of them do percentages. Ross Valley Paramedic did a dollar amount, which I think was kind of...
Actually, it was a percentage.
Was it?
Ross Valley Paramedic did a percentage, and the, the idea, we, we looked at the Consumer Price Index as an indicator, but basically, what we were dealing with there was healthcare equipment, which is inflating at a different rate than, you know, food and whatnot. So we picked 4%.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? And then I'd like to open it up to public comment.
What is the rate at which property taxes typically increase for most homeowners? If you're not under Prop 13?
Two.
Yeah, if you're under Prop 13, it can only go up maximum 2%. The only time it goes higher is if there's a sale or you do some level of improvement, and it's a reassessment or supplemental taxes. But 2% is the top, cap.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comment.
Okay, this is just humorous. So here, you're talking about saying, oh, let's raise this, and we want this extra percentage. And you've talked about the property going up an extra percentage. So let's think about this, because really, what you're doing is you're putting the burden on the people that can least afford it, and you're asking them to subsidize the larger footprints, which I've heard all the lip service about, oh, smaller house. But let's look at the numbers. So if your property with Prop 13 goes up 2%, actually, thought is 3, but I'm not sure of that, but let's look at just some of the add-ons. So for that big mansion at the top of the hill, you've got your first Ross Valley, excuse me, school bond of 250, and your second one of 125. You've got your $50 water fee, just because we're special. You've got your 195 Measure J from Fairfax. You've got your $29 Measure, excuse me, your MIRA charge. You've got your sanitation fee, for now, it's $908. So the first thing you'd say, okay, what's complaint? They're paying a couple thousand dollars for that mansion. Well, if you live in a 7 by 10-foot-a-unit, so you're probably doing three jobs to afford to live there, 7 by 10 feet, and you have a toilet and one little sink, you don't have the 20 bathrooms like that big mansion with all the pools, cabana boys, butlers, maids, and au pairs. You're asking those people in a small unit to pay the exact same taxes. The only difference is the sewer fee from 908 to 828, as well as your fee. So you're putting that burden on the same poor people that you're giving lip service about helping, yet you're trying to cap, oh, the rents can only go up 5%. But here you are, you're raising all your fees collectively, exceeding that. You don't see the hypocrisy in this? And I find it humorous. I'm not up here to just advocate on behalf of people that can't afford it. But I think if all the voters came out and realized that you're putting these additional burdens on them disproportionately, instead of how much water you use, you're instead putting these fees on them that if they live in this tiny little house, they conserve out of necessity to offset that they're paying the same thing as a house that has 20 bathrooms and a whole city going on. So I would certainly hope that Fairfax starts with the letter F, which I hope would be fair, because this is not fair to our people that don't have the same financial opportunities that you're really burdening them with. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
So again, I'm, I'm a little bit new to some of these issues, but there was emails and rumors going around that it was going to be $355, not $195.
We never talked about anything like that.
So one of my concerns or questions is that, you know, was the intention always that this would renew forever, or was it supposed to expire? And it seems like the last renewal, you settled in at a certain number, and it just was that for however long, five-year period or whatever it is. Now we're looking at models that increase every year in different amounts, and I'm just wondering what's different now than in the past, and, you know, is there a need for this? Are we in trouble, or, you know, what, what's, what's kind of behind this? And can we get real clarity out to the community on what the actual numbers are going to be?
Thank you. Okay, so before we go into bringing it back, we are at 11:35, and the last item, I think we agreed, we were, council member reports are done for now, and we'll take them up again, through written primarily at the next meeting. I don't, do we need a town manager's report? Is there anything to report?
Only if you want to hear about the parcade.
We probably do, but we'll make that quick. What do we want to do about Item 17? I know my colleague to my right is falling asleep, and I heard her yawn over...
Me? I'm wide awake.
No, this one.
I'm raring to go.
And I heard a yawn over here, but what would you like to do with Item 17? We know what Peter wants to do, but let's hear from the rest of you. Would you like to try?
Yeah, I think we could try it, and if it turns out to be more complicated, we can table it.
Okay. Do we need a motion for this?
No.
Let's let the town clerk, actually, who weighs in on these items, make this decision. Okay.
It's fine if you want to waive the 11:30 rule and start a new...
So do we need a motion to waive the 11:30 rule? Let's get that motion.
I will move waiving the 11:30 rule.
Okay, someone like to second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so bringing it back for direction to staff as to next steps on this item. Okay, would you like to go?
Sure. Just to address Michael's point, a partial tax does necessarily have to be the same per parcel, it's just too complex to administer. But the property for the, the big mansion on the hill that you're talking about, they do pay quite a bit more in property taxes, so the tax burden overall is fairly apportioned based on the value of the house, because the property taxes are far in excess of what the actual parcel taxes are. And, you know, it's, it's, we, we can't get that granular. We, we do have to sort of have the same parcel tax for, for all the properties, and, you know, in fairness, multiple-unit properties do pay more, because they have, each, each parcel is assigned a parcel tax, so duplex or triplex has to pay two parcel taxes.
This is per unit.
Thank you, Michael. We've already heard public comment.
So, in terms of, and, and yes, I think there's two ways to look at it, is if we pass this, and if we don't. If we don't pass this, I think we will be in a real dire financial straits, as Garrett showed in that one graph showing the revenues versus expenditures. If we don't have that, it is about, it's a significant part of our budget, it's about Right now, we're in relatively flush times, but the economy could take a turn for the worse. And, you know, you do get what you pay for, and funding local services is very important. It's, it's a part of what makes our community possible. I think we do spend our money responsibly. The current parcel tax works out to about 53 cents a day, and if you think about that as helping to pay for the town services and what would be missing, I, I think it's a pretty reasonable amount to ask people to participate financially to ensure that we have a town. Unlike federal taxes, which are a much, much bigger burden, the money is spent here for our benefit. It doesn't go off to, you know, fund wars around the world or military bases and so forth. So I think it is very important to have, and I think we would be in a much worse position if we did not have a parcel tax. I think there is some value in extending it out, and I think there is some value in allowing for a modest increase each year to kind of keep, keep up with inflation. And to me, 10 years with a $5 per year increase seems to be about the, the sweet spot. It's a, a little over 2% increase over that timeframe, which is, you know, I think, a modest rate of increase in terms of what the CPI is likely to do. And it seems like it's about the right length of time in terms of how long the measure should match, should last. There, there is a lot of expense and, and cost in renewing it every four years, so, or five years. So I, I think that that's kind of the sweet spot in terms of the length of time, the amount of increase built in, and sort of saving on the transactional costs of having to enact this measure again. But anyways, that's, that's my, how I see that.
Did you, were you talking about the $5 a year?
Yeah.
When you said modest?
Yeah, $5 a year, as shown on Table C for five years. So at the end of 10 years...
You mean 10 years?
Yeah, at the end of 10 years, that would start at 200 and then end at 250.
Okay, thank you. So Renee, did you want to go?
I concur with the numbers, but I wanted to address, Richard, at the end of what you, that you commented, said, well, what's going on? Are we in trouble? And I just wanted to remind people that where our reserves at this point are up around 37%. And I think, Garrett, you said that five years out, if we weren't to renew, our reserves would be down around 15? Am I, is that correct?
That's correct, but that also assumes no change in spending patterns.
Okay. But my point being that we want those reserves. We don't, we're, we should be proud of those reserves, actually. It's quite a bit higher than most towns maintain. And I would say that the $5 incrementally over the 10 years is really, really warranted in that I'm hoping we'll add fire, fire, local wildfire. Thank you. That into this, and that we will want to have that in our coffers. And again, I think that that's one way to look at it. So I think I've answered all the.
I think that's great. Thank you, Renee. Bruce, or John, I'm sorry. Did you want to go?
Either way. Yeah, I guess my concern about going out 10 years is we don't know what the economy's going to do, and we have been in this low interest rate situation for quite a long time. And in some ways, it's a little bit contrived, because it's the only tool in the box that the Fed has, you know, and there's different economic theories out there and stuff. So having it a particular dollar amount, you know, the percentage at $5 is 2.6% now, and then it drops down to 2% in 10 years. But what happens if inflation changes significantly?
I think you could always bring it back earlier, which is what some other agencies have done. I don't think we would want to do that, but that's an option.
Yeah. I mean, that's a tough place to be in at that point. I do like the idea of extending it out longer, just because coming back to the voters every four years is, I mean, it's a big campaign every time. The fact that the money stays here for things that people want is, you know, basically the first time that, I think it was Measure I to begin with, and it was just police and fire salaries, and that was it. And, you know, is that, was it the beginning of safer, it's the school, we added, you know, funding for things that people wanted in their community, which was, you know, better sidewalks, you know, infrastructure like that, youth and senior programs. And that's what people care about. I mean, that's one of the things that really makes Fairfax, Fairfax. And prior to that, we had, you know, reserves around 10, 12, sometimes 15%. And cash flow was a problem, frankly. If you drop down below 15%, you have trouble keeping the lights on, because there's a big hungry gap, if you will, in between, you know, I mean, you get, real estate taxes come in, or I should say, property taxes come in, you know, twice a year, and then you say you've got a big gap there. And you get a flood, or a, God forbid, a wildfire or something like that, then you really have a lot of, you know, there's a reason why to keep the reserves there, you know, because you have to be able to pay the bills, and it's kind of a safety net. So I guess rather than a $5 amount, I'd be more, you know, interested in something tied to inflation, or, you know, a certain percentage thing, but the easy thing to calculate is five bucks a year. So I prefer to see something that's more flexible, but I could, I think $5 for 10 years would work, and I would also include mitigation, you know, clearance along roadways.
Local wildfire prevention.
Wildfire prevention.
John, what are your thoughts in terms of some more flexible formula or something? I'd be curious to hear.
Yeah, for instance, at the Paramedic Authority, we looked at the inflation of, I mean, there's particular supplies that we needed, mostly to keep ambulances running and equipped. You know, and we settled on 4%. You know, first we looked at 5%, and we reduced it to 4% because we thought we could live within those, that thing. And once again, it was a five-year tax. So.
I think that those, those are much more discrete costs.
If we look at how the expenses of the town are changing, we could look at that. I'll bet you it's similar to inflation, which is currently around 2.5%. But I don't have those figures in front of me.
Okay.
So I would be comfortable with something like that.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
I don't have a strong opinion about whether to do $5 or a percentage that's about equivalent to that, but $5 is probably easier for the voters to understand.
Agreed.
It's a kind of a marginal difference, really. If you, if we're not at the same level that inflation is, then we're not talking the entire amount of this, which is a crash in our budget. We're talking a margin at the edge. So I think keeping it simple would be fine, but I open either one. I do like the idea of extending it out a longer period of time, because not only the transaction cost essentially of us having to go through this campaign, which will be a fairly substantial amount of work, as Barbara in particular knows a lot about from the last one, but it's, it also gives us that, the predictability as we come up against the next five-year point, to not have to be wondering how that's going to work. Voters have consistently approved these, so I don't think it's an unreasonable assumption to say that it's going to work out the same either way. It's just, well, I'll have to go through another campaign. So I think that's a good approach, 10 years, $5 increase each year. The other advantage of the increase is that it avoids the sort of voter shock syndrome that happens. If you don't increase it, and especially if you extended it out 10 years and didn't increase it, then 10 years later, you'd have to increase it a lot, and then that's a big issue for people. They haven't, haven't been budgeting for that. Not that people necessarily budget for it, but they, it'll upset people to realize.
I think that's a good point.
So you, and we are thinking about this in other agencies that I'm involved in, so it's, this is a discussion that we've had, and that regular increase is a fairly, fairly common arrangement. And I certainly do agree that the fire prevention is something that we, this could be a place for, we could specifically budget for it. There's, looking forward, I don't tend to think of, I see us as being in really good times now, and so we really do need to realistically understand that, that it isn't always the best of economic times, and this is pretty much the best of economic times right now. So we, we have probably some sort of a recession will happen before this thing is exceeded. That's, it would be, it would be incredibly off the norm if that didn't happen. And we've got climate change that we just don't know how that's going to play out, but it's, life isn't going to be business as usual for forever. And there's also, I do serve on the pension and OPEB committee of the MCCMC, which we just had our final meeting, and the final meeting of the subcommittee of that subcommittee, so off the hook on those. And we're just going to do remotely some more, a little bit more tweaking on our report, and then it'll be going out to all the councils.
So before we get into that.
Including this one. So there's that, just as a spoiler on that report, the big concern and the reason that MCCMC formed that committee was because there's a pretty obvious inflection point coming down the road for all of us. Fairfax is in better shape than most on that, but it's out there.
But let's not, let's not go into other topics right now. Okay, well, thank you. So I want to say a couple things. I've been pushing to add local wildfire prevention to this list of things, and one of the things I want to remind people is a lot of this pays for your local police that are available 24/7 and our fire. Those are kind of the biggest costs in here, but these are things that benefit all of us. And our public works projects, youth and senior programs, and adding local wildfire prevention is clearly fits with what this kind of rubric has turned into. I also want to give kind of an anecdote of something that happened recently that highlights why having our own local police rather than consolidating is really important. And some of you have heard this story of, there was a cardiac arrest up in Oak Manor in unincorporated Fairfax. And our police, Fairfax police responded, because the sheriffs were nowhere near, Central Marin wasn't near, even though that's not their area. And our police responded and performed CPR even before fire got there, saved his life, and that man recovered. Had they waited for the sheriff, he wouldn't have, so.
Would have been an hour.
Right. So, you know, every time I've run any kind of campaign, my own, or Measure J, or the sales tax measure, the IG always asks me, why don't you consolidate your police? And I said, because we have the only 24/7 police folks, and they know our community, and they respond so quickly that it's important to the people of Fairfax, I believe, to have our own police force. So we pay, we pay more for that, and that's what a lot of these costs are, and they've gone up. But I also want to point out, what Bruce mentioned, we're in better shape than most cities, because we've taken really active steps to get, to take care of that pension liability and the medical liability. So I'm an advocate of going a little longer than the 10 years. I would go to the 14 years, which gets us to 2030. And I like the idea of the $5 increase per year. I think that's much simpler for the voters to comprehend. I also like what Peter mentions, if you go to 10 years, it's $250. If anybody is up for my idea of 14 years, you go to 270. It's a number that, it's only $5 a year. Yes, for some people, it will be difficult, but I, I feel that it's not just the resources to run a campaign, is, we see how many things fill this, these ballots, and it becomes more and more confusing to understand what the heck is on that ballot. And with everything moving to even years, which has a lot of benefits, it also means you have a longer ballot. So that's great, but it also carries with it even more to understand as you go to the voting booth or mail in your ballot. So I'm, I think I'm a party of one here with the 14 years. I would defer to the rest and say the 10-year with the $5 increase. And I would also say, let's add local wildfire prevention to the list, and I think we're, you've got your direction.
So one clarification, 10 years puts us at?
2030.
2030, but it's to June 2030. Your election's November 2030. Would you consider 11 years? Because then the even number of years right before the election.
Well, why don't we go to the 11 years to make it the even? I thought the 2030 gets us there, but.
Yeah, no, it was hard to figure out it, but the year 11, that means June 2031.
And then it takes effect the following year.
Yeah, so you'd be able to go to November 2030.
Yeah, however it works out, that the election is November.
I think 11 years is good. All right.
If we have the reelection, or it expires, so that a new measure would be considered in the November 2030 election.
Okay, so we've got that. So you have your direction? Thank you.
Do we need to do a subcommittee, or?
No.
To the ballot line?
No, we would do that in June.
Sound fine with me.
Okay. And just a point, when I ran Measure C a few years ago, I raised a little extra money, and so we've been keeping that account alive, which can be switched, there's about $1,000 for that campaign for whoever chooses to lead it, which will not be me. I've done my time on two measures. All right, moving on to Item 17. Thank you very much, and thank you for all you've done to address comments from the last meeting. Appreciate that. So Ben, we are on Item 17, and that is the ordinance dealing with house size. I'm just going to summarize it. Is that all right? Would you like to do the staff report? I'm sorry. I was just summarizing it for myself.
Okay. A little confusion here. My apologies. So the town council, I'm just going to run through this very quickly. The town council considered this on April 23rd. At that time, there was consensus direction that the 3,500-square-foot house size limit was desired, with the 500 and 800-square-foot exclusion respectively for garage area for single-family residences and duplexes, and an exclusion of a 1, 120-square-foot maximum shed without any utilities. The council also provided a direction that a house, or actually the total structural development, considering garages, et cetera, of greater than 3,500 square feet at this time should not be labeled non-conforming. And the council appeared to support bifurcating what happens in the event of demolition, that for involuntary demolitions, i.e. acts of God, that exceed greater than 50% of the floor area of the house, and I'll get to the floor area thing in a minute, that they do not have to meet the zoning for any non-conformity. So in addition to the greater than 3,500-square-foot area, which they would be allowed to rebuild if, say, they encroached in a setback, they would be allowed to re-encroach. If, the split was that if there were a voluntary demolition, somebody decided it was time to remodel, and so they did more than 50% of the floor area, they would have, they could rebuild the square footage, but they would have to meet any of their zoning regulations, or apply for a variance, or in this case, we're proposing to introduce an exception process. And for remodels, demolition, et cetera, that was less than 50% of the square footage, they wouldn't have to meet the zoning. But they might have to, there might be a trigger for designer view or something else.
Wouldn't have to meet the zoning?
Correct. That they, whatever non-conformities that they have with less than 50%, that you wouldn't have that non-conforming trigger there. So the 50% is the key there. I would point out that there may be some confusion between two provisions in the proposed ordinance. Number one, in 17.016.07OB, it appears to require that in the event of an act of God, i.e. involuntary demolition greater than 50%, that you would have to comply with the zoning. But this, in fact, is superseded and addressed in the new 17.136.04OB, which, again, has that provision that bifurcates the voluntary versus involuntary triggers for the greater than 50%, and whether you'd have to comply with the zoning or not. Other aspects that the council provided direction are is to eliminate the green building technologies incentive, since that has been effectively superseded by the state's energy efficiency building codes, that accessory dwelling units would not be subject to the 3,500-square-foot limit, but would be subject to floor area ratio, with an idea that we would likely be coming back to your council this summer with some, or soon, with some discussion about ADUs, and that floor area should be used as a sole basis for determining the percent of deflation, not cost of replacements, since that's so problematic. And there's a couple of corrections. It's noted that in the It's noted that in the ordinance, the third resolution on page two of the ordinance.
So that's a supplement, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yes, that we have made, we have modified that to add two separate meetings that have in fact taken place tonight, being one of, or have taken place or are taking place. So that reflects the entirety of the consideration of this matter.
Bless you.
And that, let's see. Yeah, other than that, our recommendation is that the, your council introduction read by title only, and I'll just say the material in the rest of the recommendation, and that if you have any questions, staff's prepared to respond.
Okay, so just to start out, did anybody have any questions of staff only? Okay, Peter?
I don't remember, or my recollection may be off, if the consensus was to allow some kind of exception if the lot is one acre or greater, but how many parcels are there in town where the lot is a, an acre or greater? Do you have a rough idea of that?
I do not. I hesitate to use terms like there's a good number of them, but I can tell you from looking at the parcel maps that are in my office, that there are a fair number of them. It's, it's not in the hundreds, but yeah, there's, there's several. I wouldn't be surprised if there's 100 of them.
Okay.
I could, I could get you that answer for the next meeting.
Okay. Well, you think somewhere around 100 or so?
That's a really rough guess to me.
Yeah.
So there are several. Okay. So any other questions only of staff? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there any comment on this item through the public hearing? Press the button, please.
Okay, I passed it. No, I'm not the biggest supporter of your limitation on houses by an ordinance. If the council wanted to limit the size of houses by looking at each one, which does take additional time, but that way you get to actually explore the merits. As for Ben's comment for possibly 100 parcels, if you took in consideration those parcels that are on a slope, so you'd have reduced FAR, I would be absolutely surprised if you had anywhere near even 20 parcels that were flat acres in this town, that you could accommodate your FAR for a large home. That said, many large homes, like in San Somo, the Harrington House, the Elk Mansion in San Rafael, these homes generally, if they are made and the community puts something into them, somebody is taking the time to make a very attractive structure. The pluses, if they have this large piece of land that's decorated and landscaped, you have one house. So you probably have less traffic than lots of homes in that same area and it keeps out the reach from the state, bringing in higher density, which is something that you may or may not want. So I mean, that's a plus for you. In addition, if you look around the country, what happens with these great big homes? Well, after they go through their use as a family, they're generally donated back to the community because they're the people that can afford to donate these homes and their kids can't maintain them. So in most places, the community gets the benefit of that prior work. So somebody has really paid it forward for you if you have this home, which you get to make your input to help design. And then what happens at the end of the life expectancy of that home? It's then torn down and generally it's either put into a park or it's cut up into smaller homes, but it gives you an opportunity to postpone that decision with somebody else's money until later in the future. But right now, we have an attractive architectural item with less density for our community. So again, I would encourage you not to put this as an absolute ordinance, but keep this as something that with the guidance that you want to see in your town, while you guys sit here, you can say, hey, we don't want this big mansion, but what if this happened? Why would you take that option away from you? Something to consider.
Thank you, Michael. So was there any other public comment during the hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back and close the public hearing. And I'd like to ask if someone would like to make a motion?
Well, I do have.
Oh, comments, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and it actually, it's part of what, what Michael said. I was just wondering about the effect of severe slope on, as we were talking about that. Otherwise, my comment is, I think this looks pretty good. But that is one thing that occurs to me when thinking about the, essentially an exception for a very large parcel. What if that large parcel is mostly sloped? Then it's not really a large parcel. So how do we deal with that?
We would deal with it through the design review provisions. I think that, yes, we recognize slope is a severe constraint on development. It actually doesn't affect the floor area ratio, so it wouldn't necessarily lower the effective size. But we have, just in my brief tenure here in this town, we have reduced the size of houses, the length of driveways, et cetera, because of the impact it had in terms of runoff, tree removal, et cetera. So that was one of the points I think the planning commission made initially, was we have a pretty good handle on large homes already, so I would say we wouldn't lose that ability. It would probably be the fairly rare parcel that's large and doesn't have a lot of constraints, development constraints.
Right. So then, given that, I, my comment would be that I think this is good. And as I said at the last meeting, unfortunately, and I agree with Michael again on this, the law is a blunt tool. Doing this with an ordinance is a blunt tool, but we all, I think, are in pretty good agreement about the general direction we want to go and this is the best we can come up with to do it.
Okay.
So I'm in favor of it and I will make a motion.
Before you make a motion, I just want to make one comment. I think there's been good discussion on this. I think staff have done a great job of bringing this to the planning commission and bringing it to us. I personally still question why this is needed, given that there's something like 28 homes that are over 3,500 square feet and nothing more than 5,000. But I think that it's well done and I think we've handled the ideas of what happens with a disaster versus a voluntary raising. I think I want to thank Vice Mayor Goddard for bringing that up last time. So with that, go ahead, make your motion.
I just wanted to very briefly comment. We did, did open kind of a can of worms on rebuilding and after disaster and so forth, but it was good to open that can and kind of sort that out a little bit. And in terms of the, bless you. The lots with, with larger slopes, there are other constraints on that. And this is, there won't be that many houses that would fall under that exception too. So with that added language, I'm, I'm in support of it and I think it's a good ordinance and I appreciate everyone's input and the complexity of the sort of side issues that came up with that, so.
Bruce would like to make the motion.
I'll give it a shot. I move to introduce and read by title only an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending chapter 17.008 definitions, chapter 17.016, non-conforming uses and structures, and chapter 17.136, floor area of the Fairfax Municipal Code, Title 17, zoning to limit maximum floor area for single-family residential and duplex properties and to revise the standard for determining whether a legal non-conforming structure is more than 50% destroyed.
Would someone like to second that?
Could we also clarify that, including the supplements that were?
Yeah.
Including the supplement that corrects the whereas in the, on page two.
Thank you. And would someone like to second that? So that was Councilmember Ackerman with Vice Mayor Goddard second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bring it back, that matter passes. Thank you, everyone. Now, before we go, we want to hear the town manager report.
And the park.
On the parcade?
Parcade. So as you know, 9:30 will be the ribbon cutting and we'll open the parking lot at that time. Just some status updates. The bus stop, we're actually working with transit to move the bus stop on Monday, so on Monday.
So that's the little bus, metal bus stop that'll be on the Broadway side?
No, no. What I'm talking about is moving the bus stop that's on Broadway going eastbound back to Sir Francis Drake on Monday.
Okay, Monday.
So we're working on that. What would happen is the red would be painted green, there'd be signs and the buses would run on Sir Francis Drake. But the bus shelter, you're right, that's delivered. The Meadowbell Shelter, that'll be installed on Broadway. That's actually delivered tomorrow, but they might start putting together either Friday or Monday.
Okay.
So probably be in place like, say, by Tuesday or Wednesday of next week.
Okay.
Rapid flashing beacon system, that's on order, that'll be installed whenever it gets in. Handrails, those are all been ordered. They're all custom, so what's going to happen is until the handrails arrive, the staircases will actually be blocked off to pedestrian access until the handrails arrive. What will happen on the ADA ramp is there are some temporary handrails, one will actually, the ADA ramp will install some temporary handrails, so at least it could be used until the new rails come in. And then I think, did I miss anything? Oh, the EV station, we did add one more dual EV charging station. What it is, it's all, it's all there, but what we're doing is we're applying for a grant for the actual station. So that's through the Bay Area air quality. That's going to take a little time, but once we get it, then we could put it in that location. And I think that is, that's everything.
So Garrett, what about the bus shelter? The, the, the one we're going to?
Rebuild.
Rebuild, restore to how it was.
John Ramadas is going to contact, I checked on this today. John Ramadas is, is going to contact Garrett directly so we can start those discussions and move forward on that.
Great. Thanks.
Sorry, I missed something, Garrett. When will the handrails be installed for all the stairs and so forth?
I actually don't know when they're going to arrive. I think they might have said, well, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow, but I think they said next week, but I'm not completely sure.
So pretty soon.
They were ordered weeks ago, it just takes a while for them to manufacture and send them.
I was just, could you just give a two second on what were the changes that were made to the disabled ramp?
To the ADA ramp?
The ADA ramp.
So the ADA ramp, we had to reslope it and what we did was, we had a little more gradual standing out into the parking lot to start the ramping. I believe we might have, for the curb ramp on the bottom, maybe we created a better landing and we're redoing all the, all the railing.
Great.
But more importantly, we created path to travel in the parking lot for the spaces to the, to the ramps and to their curb ramps and so on.
Great. Thank you so much.
So I hope, I hope folks can try to show up. So we're moving on to adjournment and I would like to adjourn in memory of Carolyn Marie Allen and her dog, who were struck and killed on Butterfield Road. And the second dog was injured, so we wish him or her all the best. It's a very tragic situation and so unnecessary. So with that, we're adjourned. I want to thank everyone for your hard work tonight, as always.
Thanks.